Good morning, everyone. Welcome. We are experiencing a deficit in our sound system at the moment. So it's not functional, but the technician is working on it. We're going to go ahead and get started because WCTV has a shotgun mic that may or may not pick up my voice, but sure it'll pick up. So, Michael Lyons, you're first up on our agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Lyons with Lyons Insurance and Real Estate and Wayne County Insurance Service. We're here today to go over your renewal program for the county. I have Andy Brown here, who is with Gregory and Pell, who we work with, with the county insurance. So, don't want to waste any time. I'll turn it over to Andy and we'll get going.
Okay. Morning, Andy.
Good morning.
Morning, Andy. Good to see you again. Morning, Fishners.
Morning.
Excuse me. Thank you. When they put it in a binder, it's always expensive.
So, just kind of skip ahead a little bit. Page 26 and 34, we go through all 34 pages ad nauseam if you want, but start with the premium page. So I'd like to boil it down to, you know, four pretty distinct coverages that we serve the county with. The cyber, work comp, property, and the general liability, law enforcement, public officials. And so, you know, two of those carriers, the cyber market, as most people remember, even three, four years ago was very difficult. A lot of public entities got pushed, got caught a little flat-footed frankly with not having multi-factor authentication. All the, all the things that the cyber underwriters needed to have. We were always able to secure competitive cyber coverage for the county, so uninterrupted there. And as you can see, the cyber marketplace, again, because of all the investment that public entities, public K through 12 schools have made in the cybersecurity, the cyber marketplace is actually very soft right now. So you can see a reduction for the county there. That's for a million dollar limit and probably maybe sometime in the future, maybe not now, but sometime in the future, we probably ought to look at maybe bumping that million dollar. Wouldn't be that expensive. We can get you optional quotes for that for sure, but we've got a little bit bigger fish to fry right now. So, workers' compensation, we were able to secure an alternate work comp effort for the county through Travelers. You can see there's a considerable price increase to go with Travelers. The county's currently insured with IPEP. IPEP is a pool that's existed for 35 years in the state of Indiana that only insures cities, counties, and towns. They have over 800 participants. The county actually owns part of IPEP, so no retained earnings. It's reinsured, it's financially strong, but it's a county, it's a public entity pool that exists only in the state of Indiana and serves public entities. So there's a pricing increase there. Your experience might actually dropped a bit, but the pricing increase is all predicated on increased payroll. So that's an exposure change there. And you can see down below, we did an exposure comparison, last year's payroll versus this year's payroll. So payroll's up 12%. How am I doing? Any questions?
Not so much.
So, how many quotes did you actually get for us and have information comparisons on any of that?
Yes, and so we actually secured two workers' compensation quotes for you. You can see as a benchmark down below, Travelers Workers' Compensation of $302,000 versus the 2024, 2025 work comp by IPEP that's in the body of the proposal.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what page you're on there.
I'm on page 26.
26.
Okay. I don't see the comparison.
Can I, can I approach it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is Travelers Workers' Compensation option, and this is your expiring carrier, IPEP.
Right. But they didn't quote us for this year?
IPEP.
IPEP.
Yes, sir. This is your offering for 24, 25 renewal effective 7-1.
Is that with IPEP?
That's with IPEP.
Okay. Because you said.
Yeah, I think it's Travelers.
Travelers quoted an option, but if I misspoke, I apologize.
But they did quote it, but we're still staying with IPEP.
So that is.
Yeah, you're staying with IPEP.
Okay, okay. Now, one thing about workers' compensation, workers' compensation is a sole remedy coverage. And there's actually a liability aspect of workers' compensation called employer's liability, where most cases, your umbrella in your liability side will go over the workers' compensation, employer's liability coverage. Because IPEP is a pool and not rated, the preferred program that we're going to be recommending to the, the overall preferred program for the liability that we're going to be recommending Travelers, they will not go over IPEP. Their umbrella won't. So what we've done here is we've increased IPEP's employer's liability limit to $5 million that meets torque limits.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Employer's liability is such a rare instance in the state of Indiana, but you know, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't address that.
You're talking about EPLI now?
No, sir. Employer's liability, that's.
That's workers' comp.
Yes, sir. That's a, that, there's a small aspect of workers' compensation that, you know, like we had a town in north central Indiana, a trenching situation. Unfortunately, there was a fatality while the person was on the job. The surviving spouse could turn around and sue that public entity for intentionally putting that employee in an egregious position, a dangerous position. And so that's what employer's liability. Employer practices is your employees suing you for civil rights violations.
So this increase for the IPEP workers' compensation of about $20,000, $22,000 covers increasing the coverage.
Yes.
To from what, to $5 million?
It was, it was statutory. So your workers' compensation is governed by the Indiana work comp law statute. So you're statutory at 500, 500, 500. There's really not a limit to workers' compensation except for employer's liability. So by us, that, that increase that you talked about from last year to this year encompasses your payroll increase plus four grand to bump up the $5 million.
$5 million.
$5 million.
Thank you.
How do I do on that?
I think I got it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So the annual premium is $302,000?
No, ma'am.
But I'm still lost on this chart.
It's 234.
Oh, up here.
Yeah, that's.
This is the additional coverage.
Am I doing okay? Is the difference between 212 and 234. So there's a $22,500. That includes the fact that our payroll is significantly up from last year.
10.63%.
And then to allow for increased coverage on employer liability.
Okay. So the additional coverage options?
We got you an optional quote for workers' compensation, just from a benchmark standpoint. You know, I think the administration of the county loves working with IPEP, but we did want to show you a benchmarking effort, so that's why we got a Travelers Workers' Compensation quote as well. You can see the Travelers Work Comp quote is considerably more expensive.
Okay, and you're not recommending those additional coverage options at all?
I'm not recommending Travelers Workers' Compensation, no.
Okay. Are you recommending any additional coverage options?
Potentially, if, if we get to that.
Okay.
So I did talk cyber. That's something probably from a county perspective, what we ought to look at, maybe some higher limits going forward, but we've got a lot to swallow right here.
Sure. Yeah, we can deal with that a little bit later.
Okay.
So, going into property, can I talk property?
Yep, sure.
So the, the property marketplace as we know it is a dumpster fire with respect. That goes from, you know, the last three years really of claims experience that these property insurance companies have experienced. Last year, '23, we had 35 individual billion-dollar-plus catastrophic losses. And it wasn't just that, it was everything from fires in Hawaii to flooding in the northeast and everything in between. So insurance companies buy insurance like we buy insurance from reinsurance, so reinsurance is, is increased dramatically. And these insurance companies with respect are trying to find a way to become profitable. You know, they can pay for a significant catastrophic event every so often. Your rates contemplate that, losing a $10 million building. Everybody wished we could avoid that, but if we can't, might as well do a darn good job adjusting it. What they can't bounce back from is the frequency of wind health situations and, and domestic water, pipe breaks, toilets, sump pumps, all that happening frequently, more and more. And every one of those are five, six, seven million dollars, gym floors, whatever. So they're trying to figure a way to, and they just can't increase premiums. So we're seeing a very, very difficult position on deductible increases, and it's just not from going from $25,000 to $100,000. It's percentage deductibles. So Chubb Insurance, if people are familiar with Chubb, one of the largest property insurance companies in the world. Most of my public entities, I have a Chubb policy. I really like that Chubb policy. I've seen it work after a fact and all that. Chubb passed an edict effective 7-1, and the iteration between 1-1 renewals and 7-1 renewals when reinsurance treaties are negotiated by these insurance companies has exponentially changed. So effective 7-1, Chubb's putting a 1% per building wind held deductible. So even though, and as we know, Liberty Mutual is your incumbent carrier for your liability, somebody in Boston, Massachusetts made a decision not to insure counties. So we had to find other coverage. So we got that notification, we'll just put the property with Chubb, that'd be great. You know, Chubb should have probably served the county two years ago. And then I started getting word from underwriting, we started getting word from underwriting that we're going to go to that 1% wind held deductible. So if we've got a $35 million courthouse, whatever, you're going to have a $3.5 million wind held deductible with Chubb. I, I don't have a Chubb quote. I'm just telling you the market. So, you know, trying to find a property carrier suitable for the county, even though Liberty Mutual non-renewed all other lines, I did go back to Liberty Mutual because their heartburn's not property necessarily, is the, with respect to law enforcement exposure. And we did get a Liberty Mutual quote for you to consider from a property standpoint, but they're going to put $100,000 per building deductible. So we approached Travelers to do the property. You have a much softer, not only premium, but deductible position, $10,000, no wind held deductible separation, no domestic water, you got $10,000 deductible. So we will be recommending Travelers for your property.
Even though it's a 30%, increase premium, overall, it's going to be economical because of the deductible.
I mean, you're definitely, you're definitely, you can take the Liberty Mutual property quote, just know you're going to have a $100,000 per building water or wind held deductible and a $50,000 per building water deductible.
And so with, with Travelers, it's $10,000 per event.
Per occurrence.
Compass, all of our buildings, you know, might have damage, so $10,000 max.
I can tell you, Jeff, right, right now, the battleground is if we can keep a deductible per occurrence versus per building.
Okay.
That's how difficult the property market is right now. And I don't know who in the room may be experiencing their homeowner's renewal, but it just doesn't last with, or stay with commercial insurance. The Lyons do an excellent job, by the way, on that, I'm sure.
Except water is $50,000?
No, ma'am, it's $10.
Oh.
With Travelers. So you're trading off premium for a lower and a more favorable deductible position with Travelers.
Anything excluded, such as earthquakes?
No, ma'am. The, the Travelers offering, if you want to look at that specifically, is on page four of this.
Four?
Page four. So on the far right, you can see the $10,000 deductible. Now, earthquake and flood always has carried higher deductibles because of the catastrophic nature of those events. And that's even in good times. They, they do pick up two salt barns that they're not going to cover under flood, if that's something the county's interested in. Normally not. We could get, look to get an NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program quote, but the law enforcement animals are covered here too. The ordinance or law coverage that you see too from the bottom, that's important because if a county loses a building due to an insured loss, fire, theft, vandalism, wind, and it's been grandfathered in for code changes, ADA compliance is huge, sprinkle is huge. If it's a 50-year-old building and it's, it's been grandfathered in for code changes, the whole purpose of a replacement cost policy, that's new for old, no penalty for depreciation is you're not supposed to bet her from a loss, but if we've got to rebuild a building back to meet current codes, there's a million dollars there for the county to be able to do that, if we have to make ADA accommodations or things of that nature.
You know, it really jumps out to see a $1,000 deductible for law enforcement animals. Is that like vehicle coverage so that would cover veterinary services, or it's just replacement?
It's just, it is replacement, and it's more of a stated peril. So if a, if a dog eats its food too fast and, you know, stomach, it's not an animal mortality policy. It's more or less covering a dog in the line of duty, you know, stabbing, shooting, being run over, things like, so it's a, it's a stated policy, stated peril policy. So it's not veterinary, it's not an animal mortality policy, it's more the scope of duties for the dog and its capacity.
So it's more like collision.
More like workers' comp. It's more like workers' comp for the dog.
Catch the cross up. I've not heard it said like that, but that's horse ride is strong, man.
It's not health care, it's workers' comp.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We ready to go to liability?
Sure, yes.
So as stated, your current incumbent carrier made an underwriting decision, not based on Wayne County. You guys, Wayne County has done an exceptional job, right? And I commend the sheriff's department, I commend leadership through the years, because people that are just now getting religion because of the liability market hardness right now, the law enforcement exposure, things of that nature, I don't know what they're going to do. You guys, sheriff department, the accreditation, the way the jail's managed, we created a competitive environment for Wayne County in this marketplace. We've had four public entity carriers completely exit the public entity space. We've had two public entity insurers that would consider counties pulled out of the space. The marketplace for counties because of jail exposure is very difficult. So there's 92 counties in the state of Indiana, you know, probably 80% of them, you could throw a blanket over, you know, a little bit more rural, agricultural. With respect, if they have updated their policies and procedures through the years, if they haven't gone through their accreditation process through the years, if they haven't renovated, built new jails through the years, I don't know what they're going to do. We have a county renewing right now that we were able to secure coverage, but it looked completely different than this right now. A complement to Wayne County is probably about two of the last more guaranteed cost insurance companies, lower deductibles, that will consider counties and jails, both participated in Wayne County's liability efforts here. And when I'm talking liability, I'm saying general liability, public officials, employment practices liability, umbrella coverage. And so there's Travelers and a company called Trident. Another thing about it is, you know, so when Liberty Mutual notified us of their renewal position, we were, with the help of Lyons and the county, we were in the market immediately. If you waited a week, two weeks, you can imagine those underwriters' desks at Travelers and Trident, I mean, the stacks of submissions, they get to choose what they want to work on, what they don't want to work on. Again, if we've had jail situations, if we had jail suicide or jail death, they're probably just going to pass on it. So Wayne County is not in that position. Now, again, I'll reiterate, it's through the risk management efforts, known or unknown, the accreditation, the way the jail's run, leadership here that has allowed probably the last two remaining guaranteed cost carriers to participate on this renewal.
Can you put a dollar amount on the savings for doing accreditation or the efforts?
So I could answer that a couple of different ways, Brad. The, the best way I can answer that is not a dollar amount, is you have two carriers fighting for you. So coverage choices, the investment the county made in coverage choices through the years has allowed that to happen. Not every county's going to have that in the state of Indiana. And, and maybe one day, we're talking like cyber, you know, you can see your cyber pricing went down. Three years ago, that wasn't the case, everybody remembers that, right? So maybe someday, but the nuclear verdicts from empathetic judicial system from these plaintiff attorneys have driven these insurance companies to take a position of just saying no, or exiting the market, or not participating on some that haven't invested in that risk management. I mean, it'd be hard for me, Brad, to put a.
I guess my question more is not a dollar amount, but because we're competitive, or we have two companies bidding for us, there has to be a dollar amount savings, even though it's going up. You have choices. When you always have choices, that saves you money.
Exactly.
If you have no choices, you're, and I know you don't like this, you're at the mercy of them.
Yeah.
You're, you're held hostage, sorry.
But it, I mean, it's our knowledge of the marketplace that allowed us and our, our experience that allowed us to access these markets. I mean, the, the head of Trident's office, his underwriters are so busy, he actually underwrote this risk. And the head of the Travelers underwriting office was heavily involved in this. So it's because their underwriters, you know, they, they've just been inundated with submissions because it's not just the state of Indiana, it's throughout the country.
And I guess the reason I ask is, you know, the sheriff and the staff are here, I think it's understated that the efforts that they put in.
Sure.
That not everybody understands, you know, the accreditation, how much work that goes into the money, that they have to spend to do the accreditation, but it's saving us, giving us options. I just want to commend the sheriff and his staff for what they do because it's definitely saving the county.
I would agree. We, we've had this discussion for years as the sheriffs have, have requested funding to be able to pursue accreditation, and it is an enormous amount of work for, for you and your staff. I understand that, but there's always been that, that element of liability-wise, this is going to pay off for us, and this is the perfect example of that, that some other counties are not able to get insurance or they're paying a lot more. And I think there's a tendency, will be a tendency, to look at this and say, you know, you're, you're up by 80% over last year, but we'll be able to have insurance. And the ability to, to have a policy that covers unforeseen circumstances is, is huge, so keep up the good work, guys.
If I didn't say it enough, that's why I'm here with choices. Again, you're right, Jeff, not every county's going to have this choice. And, you know, if you have a county out there that hadn't been diligent on updating their policies and procedures, their, their law enforcement policy and procedures, investing in the jail, you know, I'm at, I don't know what's going to happen.
And it's important to note, I think, that it's not just accreditation of the jail, but the enforcement side as well, which, you know, presents the sheriff's culture that reduces the liability.
Correct.
So I, that's really unusual for a county to have accreditation on both sides, enforcement and jail. So that really has helped, I'm sure.
Correct. So if I could touch on just another aspect here too, so what do we do in the future? You know, Travelers is, is going to be the program that we're recommending. And, you know, with respect, we utilize the competitive nature in, in our office. We actually got Travelers down 30 grand, 35 grand, but the additional cost for the employer's liability on the work comp. So we, we utilize that competitive nature. Now, Brad, that, that's not going to answer your question 100%, but you should know that you had two carriers fighting for, and we used that to negotiate the most favorable terms we could with, with Travelers. So what do we do in the future? I mean, is Travelers going to be a long-time player and all that? I know Travelers is historically, they're probably the largest public entity rider in the country, but we can't keep doing this and me losing more hair every 7-1 and all that kind of stuff. So right now, as we speak, a county of similar stature, maybe a little bit further ahead from what I'm about to talk about, is, but still very good, very good like Wayne County. We're taking them into a, a larger self-insured program, and, and most people have experience with their health insurance, most health insurances, so it works kind of similar. And. And the county I'm speaking of is, they had higher deductibles initially, they had loss funds set aside already to fund those deductibles, but not to the level what we quoted. So what that looks like is a $250,000 self-insured retention across your liability lines, your general liability, your law enforcement, your auto liability, $250,000 self-insured retention. Then there's normally a basket aggregate of $750,000 tort limits. Up to, and then it goes to the 5 million. So if we have a worst case scenario and we hit that 750,000, normally there's no SIR above that, is some level of working like a million dollars or $2 million to the $5 million tort limits. You don't enter those programs lightly. It's an education process, it's an education process from an administration. I always advise clients, you know, don't chase premium dollars if you don't have your back room ready to handle that. Normally that's going to have a third party administrator adjusting claims in that $250,000 working layer. Normally the public entity would set up loss funds to fund that $250,000. So what that does is it puts the county more in control of the future. You have choice of counsel that you can have in that working layer. You can choose to fight or settle, you know. It takes you out of the day-to-day mundane type claims. So you don't see these big peaks and valleys, right? And statistically, four out of five, five out of six, six out of seven years, the public entity would beat standard markets. But you're going to have that one year that you have to fund for. So again, with the franticness, if I didn't just create a new word, of 7-1, this being something that we don't enter into lightly, everybody's got to be on the same page, Sheriff Department is going to be on the same page, everybody's got to understand this program structure. This county is good enough, this county is large enough to consider something like that in the future. And you have more control of your destiny.
Do you insure your excess liability with an over-limited carrier? Like you do in health?
I'm sorry?
Well, I'm very familiar with self-insurance in the health area.
Yes.
And typically, in fact, I think one of my client thresholds is 200, I think, for the individual aggregate. I mean, there's an embedded aggregate. And then beyond that, that they have, they quote excess carrier coverage so that the risk is in fact with the carrier. Is there that comparable construct in what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. I mean, I just explained this current program that we're proposing that we're going to put in place tomorrow, hopefully. It's got a $250,000 deductible, it's got a tower for each line of coverage of, up to the tort limit of $5 million. So your first $250,000 is on the county, that's a working layer for the county. But you've got an overall basket aggregate of $750,000 tort limits. If by chance, you know, we have five SIRs and we hit that $750,000, then the insurance company will come in at zero retention up to that $250,000 and then the next million dollars of coverage. And if we have a more significant type claim, then another $250,000 retention will be charged up to that $5 million tort limit. That's the basic working structure of that program.
What does SIR stand for?
Self-insured retention.
Thank you.
Think of it as a deductible. Yes, the difference between, I'm sorry, we have acronyms, so.
Sure, that's just one. We don't use in health.
Yeah.
Well, the health care, whether you have Employee Disaffid trust or another structure, you require fund your maximum potential exposure every year for the plan to pass muster, whereas I don't think we have that legal requirement.
This is interesting, isn't it?
Okay, well, let's come back to that later.
Yeah.
Let's finish the conversation about your proposal here so that we can make a decision.
So you can see, we put Travelers in the body of the proposal up above where the IPEP work comp is. You can see additional coverage options. The last category is Trident at the $377,000. But once again, you could probably throw a blanket between Trident and Travelers on overall pricing, but the coverage terms are more favorable with Travelers. For instance, Trident has a $50,000 law enforcement deductible, Travelers is $25,000. So for right now, we think it's best for the county to consider the Travelers option throughout. IPEP on the work comp, HCC on the cyber.
Was there any change in the commercial auto deductions, deductibles, sorry?
That is on page... 17. So we're composite rated, that means once we lock in that auto, as you go, as the county makes changes through the year, they're automatically included, there's no additional premium. Sometimes they can audit afterwards for any vehicle changes. So you can see the physical damage in the collision coverage is $2,500 for both of them.
There, that's where we are now, so. That's good.
Can I, if I'm running out of time, kicking out of here.
Right, this is important, so.
Can I take you to page 12, please? So that coverage has always been with Travelers. This is your crime coverage. We have a very nice limit on employee dishonesty coverage, which is one of the main reasons why public entities carry this coverage. However, your crime policy has proven to be a good supplemental to your cyber policy. So if we're going to go forward with that, the million dollar limit on your cyber policy, so you see computer fraud, fund transfer fraud, social engineering fraud, those are all cyber exposures, which you also have in your cyber policy. And eight years ago, people say, well, I don't need it in both. Nowadays, this proves to be a good supplemental to your cyber policy because if you have that redirection of vendor payments from the bad guys or, hey, this is Jeff, I'm at a commissioner conference in Phoenix, please wire transfer $50,000 or a vendor, hey, we closed this bank account, this is our new bank account, it's not your vendor, it's the bad guys. Your crime policy can cover that. And if we can drive a cyber incident to your crime policy, we're going to do that because it's less expensive and it's, the cyber underwriters, the cyber underwriters haven't caught on really to that true exposure. And so we have an option for the county to consider higher limits of $500,000 there. And the premium difference going back to page 26 is additional $1,500 annually for $500,000.
And that's a recommendation by you?
That would be a recommendation.
But this quote is keeping it as it has been at $100,000, is that correct? For the...
No, sir, it's increasing the limit from 100 to 500,000.
Okay, and so, but the premium is less than this year?
No, that's additional, $1,500 additional to increase those limits.
Okay, I'm not following you any, so is that additional 1,500 in the $831,818?
Yes, sir.
And so where does that show up?
So you have crime coverage, the third, all the way up to the top, the third line?
Looking at that.
You can see $1,476. If we wanted to increase the limits, it'd be another $1,586 to increase those limits.
So it's not included?
It's not in there.
It's a recommendation you're making, but it's not figured out.
So those are, these are all options down here.
Okay, and so...
And $1,585 to the 831.
Are the options and the cost of those options listed here somewhere?
Yes, so additional coverage options, you can see the first lines, increased crime limits to 500.
All the way over to the right.
Correct.
This is premium.
Correct.
That would be the cost.
Correct.
That would be added if you chose any of those, it would be added to the 831.
Yeah. And again, you have a lovely employee theft limit, probably one of the highest that I see for a county at a million dollars. I'm just trying to further protect the county from a cyber incident to supplement.
Okay, I'll leave you there, thank you. What else?
That's it, unless you have any questions for me.
So that's the only option that you recommend of those listed here, five listed here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we're looking at, that's going to change it a little bit if we do that. Recommendation, 18.2% increase over last year.
Correct.
Which is better than what we were thinking.
I was having competitive bidding going on, thank you very much.
Well, again, it's the work from the Sheriff's Department and county leadership.
While we're on that, we focused on the significant increases in premiums, but we do have some reductions here. And you've explained the crime reduction, which is one of the smaller contributors to the overall premium. But there's also 36% reduction in the general liability. What contributed to that significant reduction in general liability premium?
Underwriting philosophy.
Could you expand a little bit on that?
That's, I mean, this is the difference between Liberty Mutual and Travelers. Liberty Mutual puts more weight on general liability, so they probably charge a higher premium, but they're lower on other lines. Travelers has a better comfort level with general liability, so they start with a lower rate on general liability. But, you know, there are other lines, they put more emphasis on the law enforcement and things of that nature.
Okay, so that picked up 20,000 right there by Jamie Kell, okay. And I like the looks of public officials' professional liability going down by over 53%. Does that mean we public officials are really behaving ourselves?
Yes, I don't know of a public official claim that you've had, so the best way to control premium is to avoid claims, risk mitigation, risk avoidance, absolutely.
Let me go back for a second to your recommendation that we add coverage for crime insurance. And so with this recommendation, $1,585 additional, which of these exactly would have increased limits?
The computer fraud and the fund transfer fraud.
So just those two?
Right.
From 100,000 to 500,000?
And that's where you're going to experience those redirection of funds. We had another public entity that, this was soon after the pandemic, I'm telling a story, if you tell me, shut up. But they had an $850,000 redirection of vendor payments, the bad guys sent a phishing effort into accounts payable. They took that money, they covered their trails behind them actually. And the public entity was able to claw back $600,000 of that from the banks and everything. The rest of the 250,000, cyber carrier didn't pay a dime. We drove that to the crime policy, the crime, lower deductible, you have 50 grand deductible on your cyber, you're going to have $5,000 deductible on your crime, right? So we drove that to the crime policy and the crime coverage didn't change that much the next year. If you had a situation with a cyber policy, we're scrambling for a new cyber carrier because it'll probably be a non-renewal.
One of the reasons I like increasing our crime coverage is the advent of artificial intelligence. More and more people are able to manipulate that, making cyber crime more accessible to more and more people and making the quality of deception even better than it is today. So going forward to July 25, there are going to be a lot more skilful bad guys than there are today.
They're good, and they prey on people. And, you know, we do a little class, a lot of this, frankly, a lot of this boils down to common sense, you know. People are so busy, you know, they get a UPS, hey, UPS is trying to send you something, UPS logo and all of that. If you hover over the link and it doesn't match to the sender, chances are that's a bad guy. So take three seconds and think about it, you know, and if it's questionable, go ahead and send it to IT or whatever, let them determine whether it's a phishing effort or not, so.
But AI is going to have voice and imagery and video that, you have a video of your boss saying, take action on this right now. They'll have urgency and visual confirmation that this is not phishing, it's for real.
Yep.
I think we ought to do it, given the changes in the technology, the bad guys' hands.
Any thoughts on it, Brad?
I, for the cost, I think we should increase it, I mean, the risk is pretty high now. And I like the fact that we can direct, we do have, it's a lower deductible.
Mark, any thoughts on the funds transfer fraud? Would involve your department or the treasurer's office?
Me and the treasurer. And we have had, since I've been here, at least two opportunities to have that happen to me.
So you think it makes sense if that's 1,500?
Absolutely.
I can assure you that our small title company has been fished at least twice. The first one was in the area of 700,000. Because when you have an escrow for close on, you know, two or three properties, that escrow account can have a significant amount of money sitting in at any point in time. And we were fortunate enough that the bank's fraud department picked up on it first and then called us and we were able to nip it. But it's, they're out there, I mean, they're not just picking on big cities, it's small town USA.
I just think that we should do it, and obviously, you know, kudos to our IT department because they do an exceptionally good job too, but they keep us safe.
Even in the bumpy times of cyber, coming out of the pandemic, the market was already hardening before the pandemic. With everybody working at home, it only intensified and entrenched the market position. And so it forced everybody to invest in these underwriting required cybersecurity efforts, MFA, employment, segregation of software, hardware off the network.
So wrong with that in mind and looking to entertain a motion, it would have to be subject to wanting to be appropriated by counsel to pay the additional costs, it's not.
I don't know what counsels, you know, any contract we enter into is going to be subject to available appropriations.
That would be a problem.
Obviously, you've developed, you've built your...
We built our budget request. We built our budget request for next year based on a thirty percent increase, I believe.
But this is.
Thirty thirty five.
Those affect seven one, is it not?
Correct.
So it should be reflected in some part in your current year's budget too.
Well, exactly. Because we don't, you know, we have the seven of three this year, and half of that's gone, so it would be subject to.
I don't know what the terms of payment are, Mike.
It's spelled out on the page twenty seven.
Page twenty seven.
So we're not asking for one big check right now.
Right.
Good. Buying coverage by July one.
We need to bind the coverage.
Right. Okay, so.
So if you're willing to take a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the change to Travelers and with the increase, cyber.
Crime.
Crime. Fifteen eighty five annually.
Fifteen eighty five.
Subject to councils.
Add to the eight thirty one, eight eighteen sixty one. Okay, so we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Being then all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your work, Mike, Anita, you guys on your side.
Thank you.
Bobby, you've had a lot of work to do on this.
Kudos to Bobby.
So.
Thank you.
I think.
And everyone else that had to provide.
And I think we'll talk, I think we need to keep the discussion open for the recommendation of.
Self insurance.
Has a lot of appeal.
And I'm happy to come visit, walk through that, talk to you about what information needs.
Be in contact, I think we need to.
You guys are too good. Get out of this, my opinion, all right?
You have something we need to sign today for you?
Just, we have distinct values.
To shore up our defense even better.
Can I just send this to you in a docu sign?
Can you get any account?
We can do that.
Is that, that's just going to require the president's signature, Mike, Andy? Mike, Andy, that'll just require the president's signature?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll do this, okay, good.
We need a separate motion for that. We already approved it.
We're.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming over, Andy.
Thank you for all that work. Thank you so much.
Ron Cross is next up on the hit parade.
You really have anything to take action on? I've given you a couple memos, advisements that you take a look at. WUR, I think Jeff and I are looking at that and I think that can be posted, that's going to require some communication with the other stakeholders.
Right.
Participants.
All right.
Terrible getting it.
Do you want to give us an update on timelines for the, the Moberly, Clyde Moberly Road?
Yeah, I think I want verification because I think we were talking about a couple of different open door notices. But I need to send the notice of that public hearing. And we know we were going to do it on the twenty fourth because the seventeenth is going to be, insurance consuming budget matters.
Right.
And hearings or meetings. What time of day on the twenty fourth, did anyone have a preference? I mean, we're trying to accommodate.
Session.
Do we want to do it morning? So we're looking, what'd you say, twenties, twenty fourth?
Yeah, do you want to do it first, first thing?
That's the only way to have a control over the time of day, I think.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, okay. And then the notice to anybody noticed, it shouldn't go out yet today, I mean, there's no legal timeline. Our notice of hearing has to be at least ten days before the hearing. We are operating with a Western Wayne time deadline. They need things by July one, some way it airs in. Plated might was not an issue, they're really very, very responsive and very, very efficient.
Okay. All right, so that's all set. Any other questions, issues for Ron?
Nope.
Then.
We're going to take a break. We're going to move on.
Why don't we go ahead and do claims?
Oh.
While we're waiting for our next guest.
Sheriff.
No, I'm just.
There's a significant Reed Hospital claim out of the jail. Before I go through the official claim, has there been any specific reason for hospitalizations out of the jail in the last month?
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the general well being of the population that visits my facility is not well. And it's declining and it's not just Wayne County, it's nationwide. We're seeing that all over and as you well know, the, the amount of money that are contracted medical professionals has increased. And that's because of the extra help that it takes to manage that. And part of it is too, and I'll go back to, take just a second to go back to our accreditation. Our quality correctional care that takes care of our jail medical, they have strived to maintain under my direction accreditation through NCCHC, which is a national accreditation for jail healthcare. So all of those things together, you know, have been a positive for the county. But unfortunately, you know, our inmate well being as they, as they come to us is declined, so.
Jeffrey, in the second, do you have a third year agreement or a third year at this point?
Oh, good question, second year, I believe.
And I know there's a building increase.
Yes.
Thank you, I just, you know, there's certain things that jump out of you on a week's claims and I thought, you know, it's anything that we have control over. But you cannot control the condition under which inmates arrive. And I figured that was the answer to it. There's nothing that could be done by increasing the expenditures on food or expanding any, any public policy regarding exercise of wellness program or anything like that. It's just how they arrive to you.
That's the biggest determining factor, frankly, is how they arrive to us. You know, we certainly offer them recreation and the ability to be healthy. We provide many services, including dental as needed within, within the jail. But, you know, as they come to us, you know, in a less than desirable health condition, then, you know, that's going to dictate, you know, how much it ultimately costs.
And do you think Reed is doing everything they can to seek relief from Medicaid? Or is there anything that could be done to have assistance on those Reed?
What I will say is, is that I would hope that they're billing this correctly and accordingly. But I have to take that opportunity to thank our, our partners at Quality Correctional Care. They do all the bill scrubbing for us, so when, you know, when we receive billing from a medical, medical entity, they take a look at that billing and they make sure that it's the lowest price possible. They go through and they question or challenge different charges, send that back to the medical provider for agreement. And then that's ultimately what you see. So there's that layer of accountability and protections in place by virtue of having quality as our medical care provider.
Okay, and it's just one of those items that we're, which we just have so little control. We try to control the budget and expenditures and appropriations and all that. And then over here, there's this leak in the dike that we just don't have any cure for.
Yeah.
So I guess just watching it and seeing if it does get out of control and I guess it's just the overall condition. And hopefully the new state expenditures for our county's overall wellness and the attack on public health's, improving public health overall will eventually filter through the population and maybe that will have long term effects. But I thank you very much. There are just certain, certain line items that jump out and just pop across the face. And I thought with you here, I'd just ask that before we go forward.
And I appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief explanation on that. It is difficult and you're going to see that ebb and flow as, as the different clientele that we have come in.
Is the market for QCC type service still as tight as it was when we looked at it a few years ago?
Yeah, there, there are still available options out there and, you know, we'll be reviewing those options as, as our contract comes closer to expire.
Thank you.
I appreciate it and if you don't mind, I would like to take just a second to thank the folks here that are with me today for all their diligence and hard work in, in the accreditation efforts.
I think we should get them on camera.
I have one question. You know, frankly, they're, they're very humble in the jobs that they do, but Ally Satin, she's the accreditation manager for the agency. My jail commander, Jason Weisong, he's the one that is, is that direct line leadership in, in my jail. And of course, Chief Deputy Allen Moore, he's the one to make sure it all works. And they all worked behind the scenes to get this accomplished. Frankly, it was just my vision to, to, you know, keep accreditation through all three facets of, of our department. And, you know, that pays off in not only just the safety, the safety of my staff and inmates and the public that we serve. But it also, you know, and I've been asked several times, you know, put a dollar amount on what accreditation's worth. And I think we learned today exactly what that dollar amount is. So it's my pleasure and the accolades go to them, it was my vision, but they're the ones that are, that are, you know, toeing the line, so.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the hard work. And come on, smile for the camera. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
A lot of counties in a lot worse spot than we are with their insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, let's pay some bills, Mary Ann.
Okay, we have a lot of claims. Hold on. Move for approval of regular claims from last week dated June eighteenth. Indiana American Water dated June fourteenth. Centerpoint and Proshed Shredding dated June twenty first. Guardian Adlitem, Cassav, and Regular Claims dated today, June twenty sixth. Spring Settlement Fines dated June twenty fourth. Payroll dated June twenty eighth. Dunflex and Garnishments dated June twenty eighth. Federal Payroll Taxes and Retirement dated June twenty eighth. Mastercard Claims dated June seventeenth. Move for approval of all of these.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Move for approval of the minutes from our last commissioner's meeting dated June twelve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of our last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'm glad we got the insurance. Take a period of.
Yeah.
It wasn't as bad as we were.
Again, Bobby, thank you for all your, I mean, I'll make it lovely, he said, he's said a lot of words.
Thank you.
Because of his job security.
Exactly.
So next year.
That self insured PNC property cashew certainly is up to your line.
Good morning, Brandon.
Good years.
Great.
Come on.
Oh, there it is.
You go to Gash Horse this morning.
I've got a few packets for you. Sir. All right, got a couple things for you. Just want to give you an update on Route seven oh one, South Street Street. Looks like the inspector, designer and the contractor have finally marked all the areas of the patchwork that needs to be performed on the bridge and specifically the arches and the piers. So they have presented us with two options, two possible options to proceed forward with. The first packet that you have, option one, is just focusing on the arches specifically, as those are the most critical. And in doing so, they came up with the spreadsheet total as at the top. They have eliminated a few things, not permanently, but just suggesting removal of a few items. The fence, the concrete wrap. On top of the deck, the decking, when they did the hydro demo, there was some areas that did not need the full depth patching that were originally called for in the design. So there is a cost savings there of a hundred thousand dollars, so that was applied to this. And then the field drill holes and the concrete railing to support the fencing. So they came up with a, a credit to the contract of about sixty thousand, a little over sixty thousand. Now, I did provide you with numbers. If we do want to proceed with the fence for option one, it would cost the county an additional hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars.
And this hundred and fifty seven thousand is in addition to the one point two million that we've already approved.
Correct, yes. And the one point two was just based on the, the end dot funding. Typically, they would fund eighty twenty. But due to the inflation and stuff, they couldn't do the eighty twenty. So that's what the one point two million came about.
And so this is taking a look at some options and not doing some patching that they had originally contemplated. And, and so if, if we leave the fence, we need another hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars.
Correct, and option one is just patching the arches and not patching the piers. I did provide you within this packet, page three, it is a couple areas on a couple different piers to kind of show you an example of what would not be patched. The contractor did mark those areas and they spray painted them in red to kind of show you, those are areas that have sounded for bad concrete. So they're more cosmetic in nature, but eventually will need to be patched, say, the next five, 10 years. So option two, which would be page two in your packet, is continuing with patching all of the areas, the arches and the piers. As you can see, our designer is coming up with an additional amount of two hundred and twenty thousand. That's without the fence, so if you add the fence in there, we would need an additional four hundred and forty three thousand to do all of the patchwork and install the fence. So those were the two options that they came up with and I wanted to give you the additional breakdown for the fence.
So if you're suggesting that the things they can take out for right now are going to have to be done anyway in the next five to 10 years, we'd just be kicking the ball down the road. And I don't see that we're going to be in a, necessarily a stronger financial position then.
Or cheaper.
Worse, yeah, and it'll cost more.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
So my recommendation would be to try to follow option two the best as possible, you know, if we can secure the additional funding.
And so you and I have talked about this a couple of times and so just want to make sure the other commissioners are in the loop. On the fence issue, I have talked to the Richmond Schools Superintendent about the potential for them participating in the funding of the fence. My understanding is it was put in originally at their request. And so, you know, my concern is what's the difference between the G Street Bridge, the National Road Bridge, and the Main Street Bridge because none of them currently have fencing. And so if you do one, does that just move the issues to one of the other two bridges? Apparently, any incidents in the past have been focused on the G Street Bridge. That's where more of the kids that walk to school apparently cross the G Street Bridge as opposed to one of the others. So I did talk to him. It's going to take a little time to find out whether they're able to assist in any way, but talk to us about the timing, when we need to make a final decision and where we go from here. So obviously, if we go with option two, which is your recommendation, there's, we need to add 221,000, 222,000 without the fence. We need to add 443,000 if we want to keep the fence in. So timing, when do we need to make a final decision?
So I reached out to our designer on that. They said that the fabrication of the fence could take six to eight weeks. So to try to have the fence completed without having to do a time extension, I would feel comfortable saying you would probably need a decision into July 1st of August. Anything after that, there's potential for demo costs, contractor having to come back potentially.
So we've got 30 days.
In a prior instance, the sooner the better, but you know.
This is the G Street Bridge you're talking about?
Correct.
And fencing on both sides, protective fencing on both sides?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, just one side.
I wouldn't have thought so.
I know there is a side more on the one side.
I just want to make sure, Brandon, you are, your recommendation, your professional opinion recommendation is to go with option two, whether it be fence or no, but option two is where you.
Correct. I think the focus needs to be on preserving the structure. I think that that should take priority. And then if we can get the extra funding, you know, it's a, you know, safety concern. I know the proximity to the school and the kids, so I know you've got to factor that in there too, but I.
222 essentially. The cost of the fence is about $220,000.
Yes, yes.
The difference between, obviously, without fence and with fence, right?
So I think preserving the structure and doing the work now, I mean, like, like you said, it's going to cost a lot if we push it down the road and eventually.
221 may turn to a half a million or a million in five to 10 years.
Correct. And you'll have additional demo costs and all that stuff in there as well.
What about the issue we've talked about a couple of times on leaving the gravel under the bridge? Is that included in this or not?
It's not included in this, but I have talked with the City of Richmond and the sanitation district. They are in favor of leaving it. There is a few issues of, you know, when they put the stone in, some of their gates may be raised just a little bit, just some, a few housekeeping items, but in essence, they want to keep, they're okay with keeping.
So we have some savings there.
So there's some potential savings. I'm hearing anywhere from 40 to 60,000. So.
So let's push forward.
Water Department on the east side for their access, they're in favor of keeping it. So I'll just need to finalize those talks.
Okay. And is there anything with DNR or IDM that would need to be touched to be able to leave it? I mean, are they.
I'll double check on that. I mean, I know the paths are being used pretty heavily right now, so it may be a little bit of dress-up work in the end to leave them permanently, but I'll double check on that for you.
So that gives us, you think, 40 to 60,000?
Somewhere in there. We haven't asked the contractor to provide us a cost just yet until we finalize our talks with the city and the law.
I would absolutely advocate that.
If there's no reason to pull it out, it's ages long, you're sure.
Right.
Allows them for future use too, so.
But my hope honestly is that RCS could reevaluate how essential the fence is. In your discussions, what was your feeling, your takeaway from the, how essential they still feel? Many years have gone by really since that discussion occurred.
Correct. And it was a different superintendent.
Right, and a different school board.
Exactly. So at least my, my very brief discussion was that they thought it was important enough to look at whether they could help with funding. So there hasn't been a reevaluation of incidents at that bridge since.
Were those original discussions analogically related to an incident or?
They had, they had a report from RPD on the number of incidents on that bridge.
It's nothing.
It's not a lot, it's not a lot, but you know, is one too many, is five too many?
It's like one more than the Main Street or something, just really.
It's not, it's not a lot. And so I think we need to take the next 30 days and.
At least of that, at least take time.
Yeah, my feeling is.
Don't want to rush into that position.
But we also, we also need to talk to council about.
Where we're getting.
As far as we're at, the one issue is do we put up the fencing, do we not? That's $227,000 and they're going to have to weigh in on this as well. So we need to take them to recommendation, but because of the timing, I think next week we need to let them know that we're looking at this and what the numbers are and we'll come back to them at their next meeting with a recommendation.
A lot has happened since that decision for the fence was made. And a lot of investment has been made in suicide prevention since then. We have 988, you know, the spending on mental health has really skyrocketed since that decision was made. So my feeling is if Richmond Schools are not prone to invest.
Participate in the.
That we consider the fence altogether and withhold that expense.
I thought the last time we talked about this, you supported keeping the fence.
I've had some thoughts about that.
Okay.
You know, because I realized that this goes back over enough years that so much public investment has been made in child mental health and suicide prevention, that rightfully so, public policy has changed in that regard and the public investment in this area has been quite large. Granted, it continues to be a problem, but I think the investments that have been made are most appropriate in that area. Mental health treatment and suicide prevention programs are, I think, more valuable directed in that area rather than spending a quarter of a million dollars on a fence.
Okay. Brad.
I'm not ready to make a, I don't have an opinion on it until we get more information.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, if the schools kind of agree with this, you know.
But I do believe that we need to go with option two.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Let's take a.
Why kick it down the road?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, subject to the fencing, approve, go with option two.
And again, subject to the council approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with option two and a decision on the fencing to be made within the next 30 days. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Did it right the first time, right?
What else, Brandon?
I know back 45 years ago when this originally was designed, you know, and not paying 80% of the fencing, that was always a good benefit, but now, you know, some times have changed since then, so yes, it is a hard decision, but. So moving on, the next packet I have for you is our inspection report on Sample Road, Bridge 76. That is currently scheduled to go to letting in July, July 10th. I know we've had discussions before, our current funding shortage on that bridge is $643,000, but I just wanted to kind of give you some photos and some information on the last page, kind of details, the current rating of the bridge. It's in poor condition, the superstructure, which is the beams or the arches and the substructure being the abutments or the foundation are both in poor condition. It is a posted bridge for 16 tons, so we are taking into factor that, you know, it is slowly failing. So I would recommend to keep this one on the letting. It's just a matter of where we can find the funding shortage to keep this on schedule. I know the bridge fund itself can absorb this within the funds that we have available, but that will only hinder our future projects for next year and the following years. So if push came to shove, we did want to continue on with this. I think the bridge fund can absorb the money, but would like to go to council.
What's the shortfall in this one?
This one was the $643,000.
Okay. And if we, we use bridge fund money to make up the shortfall, where does that leave the balance in the fund?
If, if we absorb it and then the Heiny Road project, which lets in October, if we absorb both of those, that's going to put the bridge fund probably around 800,000 or 900,000, below a million dollars, so.
But Heiny Road is how much in shortfall?
Heiny Road is 765,000.
Okay, so, so if you just take this one, 650,000, it would leave you a million and a half, maybe.
Roughly, yes.
Seven, something like that.
Yeah. We would just need to have to ask for the initial appropriations.
Right, right. So, I mean, I guess my feeling, the bridge needs to be replaced. We're, we're on the calendar. Again, let's move forward because we're just kicking the can down the road. At least we have some funding. What does this put us, about 50/50 as opposed to 80/20?
Yeah, 60/40, 50/50, somewhere in that range. I haven't read that exactly.
Well, maybe closer to 60/40, so it's better than community crossings.
Which is a 50/50.
Which is 50/50. So I think we push forward. This is one of the priority bridges.
And that's why I called it last.
Because of its condition, exactly.
Yeah, it's one of our two remaining one-lane bridges, so the new design makes it a two-lane.
So what does that do to the, to the road on either side of it? Is the road currently standard for two-lane or any choke standard one for the bridge?
It kind of narrows it down, but, you know, when the bridge is built, probably started at the intersection of Heiser Station and it'd be widened a little bit going out, but then once you come into it, it would match up once it's done. But there are no homes between Heiser Station and Swallow Road, I think. So if you was to take a bridge out, or not do a bridge per se, this would, this and Heiny, Heiny's already closed currently and has been closed for many years, so that's.
How many years is Heiny's been closed?
Five plus.
Yeah, it's been closed since I've been here, 2020, so four, five, six years.
But as you look at bridges, depending on where you want to go and what future bridges and so forth, since there are no homes in that section, if it was to be shut down, you know, it's currently still open, but if it got to the point where it is shut down, then this would be a better road than, say, another bridge that you got homes on, you kind of want to block the traffic. So that's kind of the thought process, you kind of have to think about it as you look at it, in my opinion. If you're to do away with a bridge or for funding reasons, then this and Heiny would be the two bridges that probably can stick out in my mind.
Yeah, this, this bridge has an average daily traffic of about 146 cars and that, that study was done in 2016, so it is not as traveled as some of our other county roads. And I know Heiny Road is even less than that. I don't have that number in front of me, but they are extremely low-volume roads, so that's something to consider too.
What about trucks? Are we pretty sure the school buses or grain trucks go over that bridge? There's a lot of cornfields and soybean fields down there.
Yes.
I've seen a lot of grain trucks.
I think for the tonnage wise, I think school buses can still cross this.
I seriously doubt a school bus would.
But they could, I mean, with the tonnage, I think it's 16 tons.
Yes.
So a school bus could probably cross this without any problem at this point in time.
What about farm equipment and trucks?
Farm equipment, you know, we get a lot of farm equipment to go across it because of the.
But, but those.
That's an option that we just closed. So I guess I'm thinking if there were one, we would have closed, probably look at the Heiny Road.
Because it's already been closed for five or six years and.
Most residents on the road are happy with this both because they don't have the traffic going through there by their.
But we do have quite a lot invested in Heiny Road.
We, we do have some investment.
No when to fold them, you know, we should have folded it sooner than now.
Yeah, and that, that's the thing with, you know, being federal dollars to design and whatever federal money has been spent on the project would have to be reversed.
And we haven't spent nearly as much on Sample, have we?
Those two projects are kind of comparable in price. I know Heiny Road's a little bit longer, so it is a little bit more money than Sample Road, but.
But what, what, the payback on the federal funding on Sample would be far less than Heiny, right?
Less on Sample than Heiny, correct, yes.
Yeah, because we've got a lot spent on Heiny.
Yeah, again, I don't have those figures in front of me, but I know the design was $300,000 to $400,000, so you won't have to pay back all of that because some of it was local money, but then it's the investment from local that you're.
Those $400,000 would be lost.
Yeah, if you cancel the project.
Compared to Sample, which is.
It's lost, but we're $4 million short on bridges, so.
But we'd have to pay back 280 or 300,000.
But it's still.
Less than the additional cost that we have to come up with to.
Until the end of the money are coming back though, you're not starting from the square, you know, starting all the way back.
Right.
It would have to be updated as far as your design and so forth to meet current standards and stuff, but they wouldn't be as adept in the cost to redesign it or to put that design in, wouldn't be the same cost as what you already, so you've already invested some money. It'd be like putting it on the shelf per se, like we have done a lot of other projects.
Yeah, we could postpone it. We wouldn't have to ditch it completely.
But you may lose your federal funding.
Right, I think you've got 10 years from award to completion of the project, construction completion. So with that one, I think the design was started in 2020, so we would have till 2030 to get it done and not have to pay things back. I know that I've talked to Endot about additional funding and they are telling me that there's no funding until 2030. So if.
So there's not going to be additional funding on this project?
Not until that time.
It's just that the cost will continue to go up.
They, I think are going to smell the flowers, you know, from all counties who cannot move forward with these projects unless they do find new money.
Yes, and that is one specific question I have asked is, you know, when counties decide not to do a project, that money goes back to the LPA pool, but where does it go? Does it get re. Does it get reallocated? I would assume so, but I I've not been able to track down that answer just yet.
Yeah, I think we can't really make a definitive decision, but I don't think we ought to spend any more money on Heiny Road or Sample until that question really and truly gets addressed.
Yeah, the only thing is we're under a time crunch. I mean, it's it's going to Letting in two, three weeks, so if we're going to cancel that one, we we've got to know pretty soon. So.
What's the traffic on Heiny Road compared to Sample?
Sample's.
One forty.
One forty, I'm sure it's.
I think Heiny was in the double digits. It was less than a hundred, I want to say, I want to say like.
Sample had more traffic than Heiny.
Has more traffic.
Yes.
Sample has more traffic than Heiny did. But there's been some conditions change.
There have been Amish that moved in more around Heiny Road since it's been closed, which is a bigger runaround for them than it would be for a regular car on Heiny, but.
Yeah, it could be posted one ton.
It was closed when they moved there. I think I think we should go ahead with Sample. We should make a recommendation to council that we need additional appropriation from the bridge fund. Yeah, that that is probably the easiest decision to make in terms of how we fund it. I don't know, I don't know, haven't talked to anybody on council about it at this point to know.
I think we move forward to at least see what council's pleasure is and.
I think Endot's going to have to loosen the. They cannot do that to all the counties.
So we'll we'll take it to council on the third. So do you have a motion to recommend to council that we proceed with?
I'll make that.
Sample Road and take the additional six hundred and.
Forty-three what's that?
Three thousand dollars out of the bridge fund, which will require additional appropriation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Brandon, anything else you want to say?
Not necessary.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Sorry this has happened.
Let's make sure you're able to be at the council meeting.
Yes, I can be there.
Good deal.
Yeah, and then, you know, like I said, we can always let it go to Letting and see what the numbers come in. It could come in under the engineer's estimate, you know, we just won't know. You know, we've got thirty days after Letting to.
And there's a there's a range of of a cost that Endot will say, no, we're not not moving forward, we're going to rebid this, right?
Right, yeah, I think it's either ten or fifteen percent. If it's over that amount, then Endot deems it not an awardable project and then it will go to rebid later.
And this is ten or fifteen percent over?
The engineer's estimate.
Engineer's estimate.
Correct.
That caused the increase to be. All right, anything else?
I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Meanwhile, I'd like to get a green truck cam on this bridge, see if there are any violations on that posting.
Hi, Mike.
Come on, I want it.
You're on the Price is Right, the Price is Wrong.
I have a few other items and you have some bid openings, so you want to do my other items first or you want to do the?
Bid opening is scheduled for eleven, so let's go ahead and since it's after eleven, let's go ahead and do that first.
Not a lot.
And this is.
This is for Community Crossing's project. There's two different bid openings, actually. One's going to be for the ceiling project and then one will be for the paving project. And this will be for material only, labor and the equipment. The actual work will be done by the highway department.
This is definitely paving. There are two paving bids and one. Just two paving bids, okay? Open this page. First paving bid is from Asphalt Materials Inc. of Indianapolis.
And that would actually be for the ceiling.
Oh, it's the ceiling, okay. My bad, the name of the company threw me off. This is the asphalt bid, I think.
From Milestone.
From Milestone of Richmond.
I need to see the.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Just two bids, Mike, so you have?
No, there's a third one.
Two bids on the, was that the ceiling?
But one bid for, one bid for the paving and CM will probably have the two bids if you only have three. One will be for the gravel and stone and one will be for the asphalt liquid.
This is for gravel, stone, liquid asphalt and HM AMEX, so that would be.
My guess is that's probably for the stone and the gravel for the chip ceiling project. Look like it's from my mind.
Ceiling, okay, yeah, this is from, well, Assured Partners, IMI. Is that the same company? But it mostly says Assured Partners. Irving Materials Inc. is the bidder, so I guess the true bidder is IMI on the ceiling.
Right.
Okay. Two ceiling, one asphalt. I move that we take these bids under consideration.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to take the bids under advisement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, what else have you got for us, Mike?
In our cabinet outlets plan, we have a single axle dump truck that we were, had in the plan to purchase or would like to purchase. So been looking since the first of the year to try to find the right one. So we have some prices on some other ones. These are all used vehicles, so they're not new vehicles, so we just got quotes on them. So the cheapest one, and I really hate to try to pronounce the last name of that, but they're out in Ohio. I don't even know how to pronounce that name. So but the price came in at eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. It's for a Freightliner into one oh six. It's a two thousand sixteen with sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four miles on it. The second one is from Stoops Freightliner, same truck, but it's a two thousand twenty-three with only eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three miles. They will take a trade-in, so what we'd be planning on doing is trading in our old, I believe it's two thousand and six, single axle truck, traded it in. And then we have a, remember, we bought a trailer last year, then we bought another semi truck this year. So we have two trucks, two semi trucks and two semi trailers. We have an old tilt dump or tilt trailer that we hauled equipment on before, I think it's from nineteen ninety-one. So trading, we really don't have a use for that with having the the two semi trailers now, so just trading that trailer and that single axle truck. They would give a trade-in value of eight thousand dollars, so it makes a difference of sixty-one hundred dollars of Stoops being more. But if you look at getting a twenty twenty-three truck with eleven thousand miles on it versus our two thousand and sixteen truck with sixty-eight thousand miles on it, kind of my recommendation would be go for the Stoops Freightliner with the trade-in for a total price of ninety-six thousand dollars.
Do you have any idea why they're trading in such a low mileage truck?
Ah, that I do not know. We've looked at the truck, they've driven it and checked it out and everything, and the truck meets our standards for what we do.
I'm curious, do you have any reason to believe it may have been wrecked, any?
No, it hadn't, not not that he didn't, no, I don't think it's been wrecked.
I wouldn't trust.
Everything looked fine and as far as the steering, they've driven it and everything.
This is a municipally owned by the city of Anderson or?
No, it's it's a Stoops Freightliner, is out of Anderson.
They're in Anderson.
Oh, it's owned by the the Freightliner, okay, it's owned by Stoops.
Whether it's the company that traded a new truck, they may get a new truck every year for their business. I, you know, I don't know why they traded, the person traded the truck in.
Okay.
Ron, any particular findings that we need to make to?
It sounds like based upon the unique nature of the truck itself being used and it essentially boils down to a single source supplier for that type of that particular vehicle. To you need an opportunity for savings.
And this is one that you'd already planned and funded for, I never say, you've just been looking, okay, yes.
They're hard to find, they're.
Yeah, I made the motion that we approve the purchase of the Freightliner from Stoops and Anderson for ninety-six thousand.
I'll second with an asterisk, it's almost too good to be true.
I trust Mike does this due diligence.
I make it a special purchase. It's too good to be true. I'm sure that's a statutory category.
Okay.
We call it unique appropriations decisions.
So do we need to insert in that motion that it's a unique opportunity based on?
Well, the minutes need to reflect it and and this file needs to go into Bobby's file for special purchases.
Okay, so the minutes need to reflect that it's a unique opportunity based on a used vehicle.
And I think more significantly, the single source supplier.
Single source supplier.
Of the unique nature of the vehicle itself.
Okay, so is that all in your?
That is all in my motion recommendation.
And that's all in your second plus the asterisk?
My word check to make sure it's not hot.
Hot.
Good work, Mike. Good work.
All right, so with that, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mike, make your purchase.
Forgot about this.
Wait a minute, how are we going to pay for this?
It's our highway funding.
Highway funds, through the road, over the street.
Okay, okay.
We've got the money for, we'd planned on it, this is a little bit more than what I planned on it, but we're okay on our money wise. We're just going to find for what I planned for money wise, so I didn't get as good as deals I've got on it. Next thing was, a couple of weeks ago, we had an air-conditioned unit go out at the highway garage, which handles the office and the engineer's office and and the highway office. So I got quotes on that. I kind of brought it to you. We went, the project's kind of done. We went ahead and done it with the heat wave that was coming in last week. You don't want upset office personnel in the hot heat, so we went ahead and took care of it. The one thing I was wondering, do you, could this be paid for out of ARPA funds? I think there's three hundred thousand set out for the highway department for projects. So I I thought I would bring it to you. Kind of already did it, but I wanted to bring you, I did do my due diligence as far as getting quotes and so forth.
I'm happy to take that to council, though it wasn't on your original list, but we didn't, we didn't clarify the full three hundred thousand.
Correct.
I think it was like, was projects. I think that's more than appropriate to.
I think I think so, but I think we need to take it to them on the third to do that.
It wouldn't be an additional fifty-four fifty, it would be within the block, right?
Yeah, it's, it's already been done, it's just basically where we're taking the money fund to pay for. We can take it out of highway funds or I thought, well, we got those ARPA funds that they set aside for the projects out there.
Absolutely, but I think they need to approve that on the third, so. Can we get a motion to recommend?
Move that we approved the Dungen little bid and it would be charged to the ARPA fund rather than.
That's our recommendation.
Yeah.
Second, have a motion in a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
All right, that's all I have.
So was everybody happy when we got down?
Yes, they're very happy. Got in before the big heat last week.
Love for your guys to be happy.
Well, it was the ladies more so than the guys.
I have a question.
Everybody would be happy.
Were they bidding apples to apples or apples to dump trucks here? I mean, really, that is a huge difference in quarts.
Two of them are pretty close, I think it was two hundred and some dollars, two hundred and five dollars difference on two of them.
Kind of makes me wonder if we, I don't think we use Dungen here in this building.
He normally doesn't come to Richmond.
If they'll go to Centerville, I bet they'll go to Richmond.
No, they don't, no.
They really won't come to Richmond?
No.
There's a reason that we won't discuss, but there is.
All right, anything else, Mike?
That's all I have, I think. Unless you have mine.
Any questions for Mike?
Nope.
Everything going okay with ceiling?
Yeah, we started sealing if we get the weather right, but other than that, we went without rain for a while and we started, we did start sealing this week. So kind of got rained out a little bit yesterday and today a little bit, but but we're still paving pretty much everything north of forty and west of Centerville's done as far as our patch paving. We've started over here on the side of the county and on patch paving, so they're still up in that northeast corner of the patch paving there. We'll be making our loop around, the paper runs in front of the ceiling crew, so then the ceiling crew, they've started over on the west side, north of forty. They'll be moving kind of in that clockwise pattern too, so hopefully everything will go well.
Your guys moving up under this terrible heat? They know how to deal with it, right?
Yeah.
This is for you to take a look at and I'll deal with you on time for us to meet with Steve.
Be great, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mike, appreciate it. Matthew Kane, come on down.
I didn't see him there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
So far, so good. Moving right along.
I have several things, well, I'll try to stay within my time constraints. So the first thing, the first of the month, I sent to you a District Six mutual aid agreement between emergency management offices in the counties. This is a revision to a document that has already been in place for a number of years, but it was time to change some of the basic wording of that. It is our goal that all thirteen counties in the Department of Homeland Security's District Six, which we belong, will all sign this and be in agreement of helping each other out. We revisited this document after the most recent tornado that struck Randolph County and we sent multiple resources there. It talks about the reimbursement and the expectations, the first twelve hours are free and then after that, there is an expectation of some reimbursement. Again, none of that language changed, it was mainly just what a couple of different organizations were called. So I asked you to review that in hopes that you would be willing to approve and join in with that agreement.
I didn't see anything that gave me pause.
Copy was given to Mr. Cross as well for his review. When it was written and revised, it did go through the Delaware County Attorney. They were the ones that kind of headed the project up, but I also wanted Mr. Cross an opportunity to review it as well.
I can see issues, Google works really key point.
Correct.
Been a man on that.
Been a man on that.
I have made the motion for approval.
Second?
The motion in a second to approve the updates to the mutual, what do you, what do you call it?
District Six Mutual Aid Agreement.
Mutual Aid Agreement, okay. Uh we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
These are the signature sheets that you gave me?
Yes, please.
So Matthew has brought us two completely blank signature pages. That once we get, once you get these signed back to you, um what are you gonna do with them?
We're giving Bobby.
Right, we will.
Just give it to Bobby?
Yes.
You're gonna attach this to the update?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Agreement that we just approved, right? You're not, you're not gonna attach them to a?
That's the signature sheet of the document.
Oh, okay, good, good.
That I have, right? Yes, I'm sorry, I took the, I used the assumption that the the electronic copy, yes, that was sent originally. But yes, that is the signature page of the last page of this fifteen page document.
Has nothing to do with hotel per diem going to five hundred dollars a night, right?
No, has nothing to do with hotel per diem.
Nothing about that uh convention in Hawaii or?
No, I assure you.
Training in south of France.
If it's an option, I would like to put my name in the hat for it.
It's not.
Okay, yes, I didn't think so. Uh next item is the twenty twenty-four hazardous material plan. That was given to you a couple of weeks ago. Um again, this is something we have to do every year, this is the plan itself. Um that uh the base plan did not change whatsoever. Um but each year we go in and we update the facilities that report the chemicals uh that when they hit the threshold of the reporting requirements. So uh just asking you as commissioners to approve the twenty twenty-four hazardous material plan, and then it will go before our LAPC committee, um July tenth, I believe, uh for them to also approve.
And this is the order of promulgation?
Yes.
Move for approval for the order of promulgence.
I can't even try to say it, so.
What he said?
Yeah.
We have a motion.
I'm tired, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll second the order of promulgation.
Yeah, promulgation. We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Um I wanted to very quickly uh just touch on the EMS survey that commissioners have been tasked with. I have uh been very fortunate and gotten responses um back from everyone, um with the exception of one. I'm still waiting on uh some figures of their percentage of funding uh was was one of the questions. My only question is, so I don't think getting that done in the timeframe is going to be an issue. My question though was, do you want me just to go ahead and submit that on your behalf? Or do you want me to compile the data and then you input it all?
Oh, I think we definitely want you to input it.
Do you like my phrase?
Or we could vote that Jeff does.
It's entirely at your pleasure.
Pretty sure there's one vote in opposition to that one.
Okay, I just didn't want to do it without asking for your blessing.
Is there anything you want us to look at before you say?
That's entirely up to you. Uh again, I could, what I could do is compile the information, it's mostly just um, I can certainly do that. Why don't I send it to you to make sure that you agree and that you don't have any questions before I submit it?
And I think it's more likely that we'll say, oh, how does this?
Right.
How does this compare to what the contract says and that kind of thing?
Sure.
Any red flags, any surprises?
Not yet, no. Uh I haven't pulled the reports on response times yet, but I I watch those on a on a monthly basis anyhow, and they're well within.
Yeah.
The one that hasn't responded isn't read, is it?
Well, it's just one that particular question, um it's the funding sources.
Okay, but everybody else is okay?
Yeah. All the volunteer fire departments, it's all municipally based, you know, and so uh with the occasional chicken dinner and spaghetti supper, uh their funding, you know, it's easy to to know where it comes from, and we have their numbers already just for our day to day operations, so.
So even the troubled volunteer fire department south of forty has responded, okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, good, yep, I was afraid that might hold you up a little bit.
Nope, I have a lot of their information anyhow, just with knowledge of how they operate. Working with them on a daily basis pretty much anyway, so.
It's just taken a lot of your time.
Not terribly, no. It is more involved than I ever thought it was going to be.
Yes.
When it first, when you first approached me, is this doable? I thought, yeah, this is, this is a slam dunk, uh but it many more questions than what they had corrected us for.
Yes, there were just so many, I mean.
And I thought I was just dealing with the two EMS agencies, I did not realize it was going to involve volunteer fire departments, so.
That that whole announcement had more questions, every every word raised a question, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I have a question on this LAPC, um should I sign your for chairmanship as well as below the line?
Or you could wait till the tenth, when we officially do it, probably.
Okay, wait till after the, okay.
Yeah, wait till the actual board approves it and then you can sign as chair.
You're right, okay.
Yep. Um, sorry, do you have something? No, have you already discussed the nine-one-one interlocal with City Richmond? I saw that was for your other discussion topics.
Yeah, we have not.
Okay, I just wanted to, I have not seen a signed copy of that document back from the city. Have we had any luck yet?
Um I spoke with you, the city said they gave it to AJ.
Oh, yeah, I'm kidding. I think we might want to re-execute it and get it going back over across the street.
They they've already approved it.
I thought they had.
They've approved it, I watched it on TV, I, they they approved it, we just don't have the signed copy back. And and I went to go produce that uh for for someone and I didn't have it. So then I thought, okay, well, maybe I just didn't get it from Bobby, and she said, no, I haven't seen it either. So we just need to get that back from the city if someone could help me.
Well, so if it's, is there another copy, a blank copy that we can re-sign just in case?
We can certainly do that.
I don't have any copies went across the street, I would have thought more than one, because they always keep an original when they're under a law.
All that we signed.
We normally do three.
Because we'd already signed it.
Yes, and counsel.
And counsel, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you might, okay, I'll try to remember, see something. AJ, you might give us just a call, she might be able to sort circuit the whole process, but she may not where it is.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Um severe weather training for employees, uh we've visited this topic a couple of different times. Um I saw how well the active shooter training went for employees. Uh my my question, we were thinking about offering it two or three days, maybe about an hour session, I'm I'm picturing. Uh focus on primarily uh severe weather awareness, training, what to do, along with, I would like a section of that be um putting some importance on planning and having a written plan for the offices. I had shared with you a very generic boilerplate template, uh this has been several weeks ago, so if you've forgotten, I certainly understand, I can resend it. But that would just help guide individual departments into thinking about specific things uh uh to go along with their continuity of operations plan. Um if they don't have one, it would actually be considered a continuity of operations plan, and then touch on that in the training of the importance of that. So I I I guess I'm just looking for your approval or, you know, whatever you think would work best if we, if I just pick three days, two or three days.
Different times a day.
Right, and then whatever office can send whoever, if they want everybody to attend, great. If they just want representatives to go back and train the trainer.
We can schedule this room for you to have it here or.
Or we can use our train, yeah, so either whatever's most conducive, but.
Whatever you prefer.
Okay, I'll I'll work with maybe um Kim Clauser to look at some dates, make sure there's not any huge conflicts, and we'll try to get something on the calendar and push it out.
What do you think about, um is there a need for us to update or reprint maps for for our buildings about, you know, where to go for different issues? Fire, this is your accident, a uh a tornado, this is the closest?
Yeah.
Place to shelter.
It felt like, I'm trying to remember, I feel like we've had this discussion two, two or three years ago, and I thought someone redid some maps, but let me check with Guti on that, because I think they might have done a floor layout.
Okay.
Or we talked about it and then it never came to fruition, which is also entirely possible, but.
There've been construction down in probation, and I'm just sure we haven't had remapping done since some of the changes have been made downstairs.
So let's uh, yeah, let's take a closer look at that and get with me and we'll.
Okay.
Make sure it gets done.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And then last but not least, uh and I'm gonna kind of walk into this one a little blind. I had uh, I had presented a couple of weeks ago our, my budget requests um for twenty twenty-five. I submitted that to the auditor's office and had copied Beth Leisure on that. She said, I believe she had a conversation um with with you, Jeff, and then wanted me to come back before commissioners, but I don't know in particularly why, whether we were looking at other funding sources. She had, what prompted the conversation? She had asked whether or not uh we could maybe use some this year's funds as opposed to next year's, which I told her, right? I'm willing to work with her however.
This is a reference to what two projects?
It means nine-one-one software, yes, correct.
So I think, I think the question is.
Okay.
Is that something that that we want to consider spending out of uncommitted ARPA?
Okay.
Now, I want to say the number was like seventy-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand.
That was the recorder, that was the recorder project that would be difficult to do early, because I'm already under contract till next year.
That's the one we talked about.
Yes, so it's a hundred and uh one hundred and seventy-five thousand is what I had.
Hundred and seventy-five, okay, I think I understood her to say seventy-five, so, but it's one.
That was one of the projects, but I told her, there's really no need to do that one sooner than I would be paying two companies for the same service.
Okay, I don't want to do that.
I don't want to do that.
This is is the soft, nine-one-one software.
Call delivery software, yes, sir.
Okay, so we can add that to our conversation. And and see, there's only, there's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is left uncommitted at this point. And so uh one of, one of my concerns is we probably need to have a list longer than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in case something else doesn't come to fruition. We still need to complete them or get at least on your contract by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Sure.
So so there should be a list, kind of a waiting list, I'll call it, just in case.
Okay.
We need to commit money quickly.
And as I I told her, it, that's entirely up to to you and counsel and how you want to. So we'll certainly work with you as much as we can to make it happen if we need to.
Yeah, um is that everything you have or?
I believe so, unless I'm forgetting something.
And then let me bring up an issue, I had a meeting with Centerstone and and folks from the city and the health department uh earlier this week. And so mobile integrated health, you're familiar with, but right now, the original fire department is providing that service now, okay?
It went belly up last week?
Well, up until now, they've been providing that service.
Yes.
Uh and we started having conversations a couple of months ago with Centerstone, who is is, looks like they will have the opportunity uh and funding to start a crisis center.
Okay.
It will have a transportation component, which is going to be similar to mobile integrated health. So the health department with the Health First Indiana funding have in their twenty twenty-four budget some money to expand the Richmond program to the whole county. And so that money potentially will be committed to Centerstone as well to help them get started. So it will not only cover all of Wayne County, parts of it will be regional.
Okay.
In Centerstone's delivery, delivery area, which I think in eastern Indiana includes Randolph, Union, Fayette and Roche along with Wayne. So uh so the issue came up of how would those folks be uh be notified? Could they be dispatched under certain circumstances? I suggested that we want that conversation to be taken up by the Ops Board.
Okay.
And by you and and your folks here uh on how that might work. Because the intent here would be for people to be able to be taken to this crisis center as an option instead of going to jail or going to the emergency room.
Okay.
Uh and so it looks like it may be a very useful program for eastern Indiana. There are counterparts to this program in Columbus and Bloomington. They call it the Stride, S-T-R-D-R-I-D-E, Stride Center. But it's it's, that program is under the umbrella of Centerstone, so. I'd like to connect you and and the folks from Centerstone who are working on this and start having conversations about how that might work, under what circumstances nine-one-one might contact them directly instead of contacting the police or fire, EMS, what have you. So I don't know whether anything will come of that, but at the very least, I think you all need to know what they're, what they're hoping to do.
Sure.
And how that fits into the overall puzzle of, you know, what to do with somebody who's having a mental health crisis or or a drug crisis, uh and and how to respond. And I think, you know, the issue of safety for everybody is going to be up in most of people's minds as to whether there needs to be a police officer dispatched first and then maybe, maybe later on when somebody's there to evaluate it, they might call the Stride Center to send somebody out to the scene or like take somebody to to the Stride Center. So anyway, a lot of moving pieces, I don't have nearly all the answers. But I think I'd like to get you connected with.
Sure.
Amanda Mullins is the locally, uh the Centerstone person who's dealing with that, but some of her home office people are are also involved initially, so.
Yeah, uh the one thing I'll just remind you, our operations board meeting, our next one would be July seventeenth. That may be too soon to make any decisions, but if we need to reach out and invite them to that meeting or, yeah, um or just initial conversations first and then bring bring them into picture league or whatever.
And you know, you know, Richmond Fire suspended what they had been doing, but there is money, there's grant money still available and uh and at least the the question asked was, is it possible for them to to allow Centerstone to get started earlier by using some of their grant money? Their, their mandate doesn't begin until January one. But if they can access some of those dollars either from the health department and or the fire department, they may be able to get up and running, you know, this fall.
That was gonna be my question, if the city has stopped their integrated health, they're not doing anything that right, because.
I think that it, they, it's, the program is suspended, so it's it's on pause until they decide for sure whether they're gonna, you know, give the grant money back or whether they can use it in this other way with with Center, or with Centerstone. I know just enough about it to be dangerous, so I want to be real careful.
Well, I was just, so did we, it, it's just a matter of funding and what my question is, did, did the health department purchase some vehicles for that integrated health? No, that was surely city bought.
Zero dollars from, from the health department.
Been an RFD project.
All right, that was my, I was just.
And no money of the 140,000 they have budgeted for 2024, zero has been transferred or spent.
But I think it'd be really good to, for there to be an autopsy contested on that.
Oh, sure. And they've already started that process and, and again, I know just enough to be dangerous, but, you know, what were the issues? And some of them involve how, how do people get connected? And can they, should they be dispatched directly? Or does, does somebody else need to be dispatched first and then called in?
There's a lot of moving parts.
Exactly, so, so that's why I think you need to be involved, you and Aaron, early on to, to set up a system that's going to work for everybody.
Okay.
And one thing I'd be really curious to know is how you've interfaced with Choices, which is definitely a mobile integrated health program that has been here for years, you know, like three or four years. Elizabeth Hansen, I don't know if you have direct contact with her, she is the editor. I will send you her contact information. She works out of Connersville. It works much more smoothly out of Fayette County because that's where they're kind of physically located and they mobilize in Wayne County. But they're a mobile company. Are you familiar with Choices?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But we rely on law enforcement to request them to be notified.
See, that was the kind of logic.
We're just simply making, simply making a phone call notification.
Right, so you, your contact is to law enforcement to link you to Choices? And whether that would be the case with Stride, you know, but, so at the Ops Board, I think your experience with RFD and Choices and how different they were could be important to make sure we improve on whatever you think needs to be improved with Choices and greatly improve on whatever maybe went wrong with RFD could, could help us to make sure we only build on the past to make it better in the future. I'm curious also whether Centerstone was looking to opioid settlement funding more immediately. They weren't, okay, they think that the health, public health money would be the source, okay. Because I've been talking to Choices for years trying to get them to apply, you know, because that's exactly what the opioid settlement exhibit E talks about.
Well, they haven't ruled it out, but they haven't.
Yeah, good, because, because, you know, Choices is totally private and, you know, relies on funding to operate and they've had a pretty good track record. It's just that their presence in Wayne County is a fraction of the enormous contribution they make in Fayette County. And I'm jealous of that, so thank you.
Okay, and you said the next Ops Board meeting is July 17?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can, we can have that being a gender item at whatever level you want it to be.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can I receive real quickly here?
Absolutely.
Very briefly, I think I sent you all an email, forwarded you an email I'd received from, well, Pierce's attorney as to the possible discussions or possibility of extension, extending the current extension term of their lease by a year. I, they have a meeting today, I totally tried. I, I frankly, I didn't expect, I felt was a part of removed from the expiration of this term. I wasn't sure if there'd been a comfort level in having any substantive discussions of that. I don't want to speak for you, so, I mean, I, I think, I, I will contact and I think they're meeting then today. So I was going to try to be able to send an email or message.
I guess my immediate reaction to that was we purposefully notified them well in advance before their current three-year term started, option started. I don't see any need at this point to tell them that, that we would extend that lease. I think in the coming year or two, we'll know much more about what our own needs are. But I think the growth of, of funding for Health First Indiana opens the question of, we're probably going to need that additional space.
That was totally unforeseen contingency at the time we even negotiated the original lease.
Right now, they're already in there, in that building. You know, we've got some of them here in this building, so, and, and Dr. Coulter was one of the very strongest proponents of not separating management from staff. And so, that's what led to that building ultimately was bringing all of the health departments together.
Right.
And so I don't see the need for us to, to do that to the current health department when the needs are, are going to grow. So, you know, if it turns out that they need an extra couple of weeks, then, you know, at some point.
But right now, you're, you're, you're not positioned to make a commitment on behalf of Wayne County government.
He didn't have a really good argument for not having enough time either, did he?
I didn't argue, I just, I just forwarded what, what I received to you.
And, and you do not support extending.
I do not support it. We've given them ample, I think, last year when we sent that letter, we gave them ample.
I mean, if they say they have a construction project, that was my question. Are they building a new building that is scheduled to open in 2027?
Not been informed.
I'm not aware of that if they are.
I mean, my, my point is until we're given reason to know why that is to, why they would request that extension, we have not been given reason to consider it.
They've had over a year's notice, they have two more years on their lease. I'm not inclined to make a commitment at this point.
I'm.
But it looks like our need is going to grow in that particular area.
The only thing that, you know, I think we could consider is if construction just cannot be done in that amount of time and we get a date where we can.
In fact, they asked us not to. They, they wanted us to extend it at the current leased, leased rate and there was no advantage to the county anyhow that far as it even.
That was a starting place anywhere.
Okay, Beth Fields, community coordinator, welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I can still say good morning, Commissioner.
Yes, we, we fell behind a little.
That's okay, you know I'm close, it's very easy. So Jeff, plaster, I will give you two originals of the memorandum of understanding between Wayne County and the Children's Bureau Commissioners, do you need a copy? I have extras if you need it.
Yeah. Get what I see. The car seat is not about car seats at all.
It's not, no, it's not about car seats at all. So as part of the health program, one of the projects that was brought forward through health, health and wellness was we need a one-stop shop for families for children's services. So Children's Bureau, Inc. is actually the not-for-profit in, in Wayne County in Richmond. They're operating as Firefly Children's Services located on North 12th Street. The county contributed 25 thou, pledged 25,000, the city pledged 25,000 to bring needed upgrades to their building. One of the things they wanted was a vehicle. Wonderful, they were able to buy out a lease that was in their Children's Bureau fleet of vehicles. So they have a 19 Dodge van for less than $5,000 and part of the funds, the 25,000 that Wayne County has pledged is supporting that as well as upgrades to the building. So this is, the MOU was reviewed by Attorney Ron Cross as well as Ken Zussels for the city of Richmond. Firefly has had it, Mayor Oler has signed it. So now the acceptance of Wayne County would allow us to issue a claim for Wayne County's half to Firefly.
So let me interject here.
Yes, please do.
The confusion about the car seat program. What it was a car seat program.
They.
So I, I.
Go ahead.
We initially approved through the health program, building, remodeling, rehab to their, their each space. They had a vehicle up to $50,000, $25,000 from the city, $25,000 from the county. Vehicle of what makes it a, a countywide operation. Because originally they were just going to operate out of that building. They said if we get, get a vehicle, we'll be able to go out into the county. So they did everything they needed to do.
They did.
They did not spend the full $50,000. They asked if that money could be, the additional money could be used, which was about $5,000, I think, to be used for a car seat program. And I said not without coming back to commissioners and council and, and asking whether that would be approved because it was not, not the original stipulation for the health program. The, the city subsequently has apparently agreed to go ahead and pay for half of the car seat program. And so, if you want to do that, it's, you know, like anything else, it's, it's something that we could spend ARPA dollars on. It's, it's a legal purpose for, for those dollars. And if it's, it's lost revenue dollars, restrictions aren't nearly as great. However, my opinion is we shouldn't do that without looking at all of the possible uses to spend that money because this is not, not what, what came out of the health program. So with that, I'll say if, if you want to invest that money in their car seat program, we can do that, and I think we would make a recommendation to council and then council would either, either approve or, or not. And, and I've explained to them several times that that's outside of the original agreement on the health program and what we would fund and so forth. Without, without coming back to everyone for additional approval, we could just, we could just write them a check and make it part of this agreement, so it's.
And I will add, Firefly is grateful for the support they have received and they have, they have really been good stewards of the funds. Some things they have donated, some things they bought the parts and did themselves. So they really made, made a really big dent in, in their building and the upgrades with the minimal amount of money of $50,000.
And they have no other means. I, I suggested to them, go back and look if there's anything else you need for, for your building.
Yeah, we, we've been pushing this since, what, March? We've been, we've been building their needs and, and what they have done and they've really been a good steward of the money.
So my suggestion would be let's approve this and the total that the county would pay is 22.
22, 367, 98.
So they actually have product in mind, that's why it's not a round number?
No, no, this, what we're reimbursing them for is their investment.
Their capital.
Because they've already done it.
They, they, we're reimbursing them. I have invoices and all supporting documents.
And that's what this pays.
For the original grant.
Correct.
Okay, it has nothing to do with car seats.
So if.
Exactly, the original grant had absolutely nothing.
Nothing to do with car seats.
Renovations to the building that they are leasing on North 12th Street and the purchase of.
And that was in the scope of the original grant?
That was the original, absolutely.
So we are approving that again, that would be redundant, right?
We're, we're approving the memorandum of understanding and the, the claim, some of it.
And, and their Schedule A includes the car seat because this is an agreement between, it's a three-way.
And the city is authorized.
And the city has authorized it. So when they first turned in Schedule A, they did not have the car seats on and I had to send it back and say, oh, you have to add that or the city can't consider it as a reimbursable.
So what we're approving is a change to the original agreement to include $5,000 in car seats, right?
No, no, no. The city has authorized paying for half of that request for car seats. We are not, it's not been here for the county to pay for car seats. It goes again, it's a change to what the original grant was.
So we're not being asked to pay for car seats at, no, at any time?
They did ask, they did ask. It needs to be a separate approval process. This is already approved.
This is, they're just wanting funding right now, they, they need us to write a check back to them.
So the memorandum of understanding, the verbiage supports Wayne County supporting this up to $25,000 as well as the city of Richmond up to 25,000. If you look at Schedule A, which is page three, even with the car seats, they still didn't quite make the 50,000 mark. They added the car seats as kind of a, man, we're, we just have everything we need, could you consider this? The city of Richmond said, yeah, I think we can. Wayne County government is saying, well, that's outside the scope of what the project initially was. So that's why it's being discussed today.
So we are being asked to change the scope of the initial.
They're asking for.
Grant.
For the car seats. I, this is just me. If the two of you want to change the scope, you can. I do not want to change the scope. I think it, it is unfair to everybody else who participated in, in the help process to change the rules just because these people didn't need $50,000 to approve their building.
Okay, well, that's different from what I think you said, from what I understood earlier.
No.
Because they are asking for us to approve car seats. That's, they're asking for the county to pay for car seats.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that is absolutely correct.
That's not what I understood earlier.
That's absolutely correct.
And see, do you have any idea of what stage of car seat? Because it takes at least four different types of car seats.
You know, when they, when they first presented this, they just gave us kind of a line item, we could do a car seat program. I said, okay, tell me more. And they didn't say more than what they put on the Schedule A. They would purchase 35 car seats for car seat safety education. And part of that education would be providing a car seat to a family. That's as far as they got. They didn't offer any more information than that.
Because there are other sources for car seats. ICAP, for example.
There are several others.
There are.
For car seats, absolutely.
Right, ICAP provides car seats for every newborn at Reed, for example. And, and Reed has so many sources for car seats that they said, ICAP, we really appreciate these car seats, but we have more car seats than we will ever have babies. Okay, so there's that.
Yes.
Now, as you, as the child grows and grows, because a lot of kids have to stand car seats till they're eight years old. You know that.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, and the bigger the child gets, you know, this is, it's like sneakers. You know, it's a great expense, but definitely newborn car seats would be a waste of money. Car seat education, car seat installation is something that everybody needs because it's hard. But I'm with you, I, there are so many sources for car seats. My own personal experience with there being a car seat glut.
Well, I make a motion that we approve this memorandum.
Which does not include.
Which is not included for car seats. As is. That's my motion.
I'll say.
I, Jeff, we, I, I just sort of thought we already had. We had not approved this M O U.
We've not approved the memorandum of understanding, that's which.
We never have done that. We never have done that, huh?
Which we need to do before we can pay them.
Well, I'll second if you would rather not.
You can second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Because it makes it look like I, I don't want to. I do, but I don't want to buy any more car seats.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the city and with the Children's Bureau. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, and this is for the.
Yeah, only, only the president of the board of commissioners need to sign this.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, I, I think big kid car seats are needed, but little baby car seats are not, but.
Thank you. And, and there is no disappointment on the part of the Children's Bureau or Firefly. They are very pleased with the funds and, and they've done a good job.
All right. Anything else, Beth?
That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Beth?
No.
All right. Thank you. Here are your signs.
Thank you very much. And then Bobby has the claim for signature to Firefly. You could do that outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Adam.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon.
We've hit, we've hit that mark up. I'll try to make this short because we think that you've been provided three bids for some office furniture. Do you have those in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I don't think, do we have it in front of us, Bobby?
No, I did not print them out since I sent them electronically.
So, so this furniture, and I can actually give you my copies here if you'd like to.
Oh, you have some.
We saw them.
I've got one copy.
Yeah. Well, and, and Steve, Steve talked to us about it, and I think he's been to Cory, it was here.
Is this the same furniture that we talked about?
So the furniture for the court?
I think so, yes.
Okay, okay. No?
This is Judge Cox's.
Oh, I apologize.
This is Judge Cox's, not.
So, so these three bids that we obtained were, are for office furniture that go into Judge Cox's court. Obtaining these three from Friends, Office Three Sixty, R J and R J E Business Interiors. Really, the intent here today is just to seek permission to move forward from the commissioners on one of the three bids contingent upon myself, Cory, finding the money to pay for, for this purchase.
Okay. And the low bid was from, was local.
I believe was Friends' office was the low.
Friends' office Three Sixty were both the same.
What'd you say?
Friends and Office Three Sixty were both the same quote.
So I.
It's not the way I remember it.
I have, um.
It's not the way I remember it.
Friends was about six hundred dollars cheaper than Office Three Sixty.
That's the way I remember it.
And then R J E was a little bit above Office Three Sixty, so.
Okay. So it's Friends and what's the number?
Uh, the exact number for Friends is two thousand seventy-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
That's the low bid, Jim.
Yeah. So do we have a motion to approve that purchase if they can find the money?
I move that the low bid from Friends' office be preferred, assuming money can be found.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No, no.
For those, thanks for coming out.
Didn't want to eat, eat into your afternoon any more than I had, so thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Nice having you here for quite a lot longer than we expected.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Steve is not with us today, but he's got a couple of things that he asked me to go over with you. So you've got in front of you his, his spreadsheet. The good news is the generator project is beginning to move forward. Contractor was on site this weekend. Is, is looking through, getting the site preparation completed. The generator itself is tentatively scheduled to, to be delivered in the next thirty days now. So we hope that in the very near future, that project will move forward, getting the, the concrete pad set for the generator to go on and that kind of thing. So that's encouraging. It's been, seems like it's been forever that we approved that project and, and with no activity. The chamber technology, additional microphones have been ordered. The new, the new technician is working on this. They've ordered a new control unit that, the software at least that will, will control the microphones, the sound system and the cameras and the lights and all, all of the technology that's been installed. So we're looking forward to having that done yet this summer. The marble in the entrance of the courthouse, the installation is going to be this weekend. Should take two days. I think that they'll start actually Friday evening and go into Saturday and Sunday. Don't recall that there's any more to it than that. If, if people in the courthouse were notified, if they needed access to the building for the weekend, that, that they could contact the, the building department and they would arrange to let them in through one of the other entrances. Seeing the Coolman Center roof, we actually have a contract here that is with the, the architect. And that contract is for them to go through the bid process and then do the construction, construction inspections as we go through that process. There is additional funding when it comes time to actually go to bid that will be required. And it's like there's several copies of this.
So we're going to consider that contract today?
Correct. That's why there are several copies, I reckon. You've already, Steve said we'd already seen it, Ron.
No.
This is the contract for Kevin McCurdy for the, the architectural work and.
On the roof.
Inspections on the roof, that roof and ceiling for Coolman. So. Somewhere in here should be around.
Full seat conversation.
Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars?
Looks like thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars on page nineteen. Eighteen, nineteen.
Seven percent for a design and bidding. None for, no scope of work. He is completing. Okay, design bidding. It's really all schematic design, design development, construction documents. That's where it is. You've got sixty-nine for procurement fees, which.
Does he want the actual bid?
Yeah, I mean, that may be bid review, but there's nothing for construction, that's fine. I mean, that's a school of services. I think with Steve's expertise, we can keep an eye on the project as it's being constructed.
So we need to approve this today to stay on schedule is what Steve is saying?
Correct.
I move for approval of the L W C, uh, contract.
I'm saying that their fee's seven percent.
That's, that's what I was told. I didn't actually do the calculation, but it's based.
It's on here. It says seven percent fee of thirty-two, three eighty.
Oh, yeah. So remember that the Coolman roof also includes reconstruction of the ceiling inside. So they're gonna, they're gonna replace the lighting, the, the actual ceiling panels. They're gonna paint the, the grid work instead of replacing it. And, and they're doing the roof, which is a coating. And then the, the ceiling, which so that should give the building a homey look.
It's very discolored.
It is.
What's happening, I'll second. Maybe it's motion to approve this contract.
We have a motion and a second to approve the A I A contract. And there's several copies here to sign. If there's no further discussion, everyone in favor of the approving the contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
We're deciding it's only one signature, it's about four hours.
Yeah, I think it's, must just be my signature.
Sure, the hours to you on the.
Okay, I get to sign.
Didn't get a ticket.
For more.
We had it today.
Okay.
Go down there and sell tickets, get in.
Yeah. Let's see what else is on the list. I think that's all from Steve.
No. He's got the decommissioning.
Oh, yes, he does. Where is that? Request for the commissioners to declare approximately twenty-five computer monitors and three televisions of no value so that they can be disposed of. Do they all have a copy of this or just?
No, just.
So he's got some pictures of stuff. But these are, these are computer monitors and televisions that I T has said dispose of ordinarily, that would be disposed of through the, through the seller process, the auction, the fall. We want to move away from that auction format because we end up storing these things for.
It costs more money.
People take them over there, they move them around, and then we might get a dollar for all of them together. We might get nothing and they end up going in, they're being disposed of anyway. And so the request is that we go ahead right now, declare these of, of no value so that, so that they can dispose of them and not store them for the next six months. Ron, I guess Steve's intention is to move forward on some kind of process to do this.
Online auction?
No, no. To dispose of these as of no value, to take them to the dump or to give them to somebody.
Seaton Hall has free electronics.
Well, I mean, that, that's an option. But I think for some of these monitors, there's a charge of like ten dollars or twenty dollars per.
Yeah, I mean, unless you catch them on.
Exactly. So Steve believes that.
He wastes disposal days.
They still charge for, for these C R Ts. And so, so his intention is to find the least costly way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I thought, I thought on special promotion days at least through W U R, I didn't think they charged. And they still charge a little bit for.
It depends on what it is.
It's because W U R pays for it. And so we'll see how that works out as we move forward.
There's no question they don't have any value. I mean, you know.
I move that we declare that these.
So this will be a test.
Twenty-eight electronic devices have no value. And that, and allow.
Dispossess them. Now Steve dispossessed them.
I see, Steve disposes of as they wish.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. That's all from Steve.
Yes.
Okay. Now, you've got a health department hotel rate increase.
And we have a request for one room, two nights at two hundred forty-six ninety-eight a night at Embassy Suites for this past June third and June fifth.
Move for approval. Have a motion to approve. We have a second.
What market?
Embassy Suites in Plainfield?
Plainfield?
Yes.
Geez. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the increased hotel rate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Health First Indiana grant contracts.
I have one more health department one.
Oh, okay.
I've got a second one for the health department for an increase to one sixty a night for four rooms for three nights in Bloomington at the courtyard.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve that hotel rate increase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. And then we have a covered bridge certification. It's something we have to file annually. We don't have any covered bridges, but we still have to file it. So we need signatures on that.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the covered bridge certification.
So moved.
Second.
Which we don't have anymore. We have a motion and a second to approve certification. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Here, Ron, I see. How much did this cost?
Well, I asked him if they'd give us some.
You guys, you told me to put it on the agenda that you're supposed to approve the contracts for signature now.
Do we have, did they give them back to us?
I don't have them, no.
Okay. Did we, we didn't already?
I thought we approved those. Yeah. We approved those subject to change. We approved the police contracts.
No, not police.
Oh, that's okay, right.
This is Health First Indiana. This is, this is the health department's grants. We approved them subject to that one.
The re. And they made, they agreed to make that change.
Okay. So they, they approved them at their health board.
Yes.
And so do we need to do anything else?
I don't think so. You've done it once.
Reapproved their approval of our reapproval.
Who's on first?
Exactly. Okay, so that's all done. The health board approved our.
The one change was to add, add in the management component or supervision component to the re.
Correct.
They approved that.
Okay.
The others were just stylistic recommendations, but I made them.
Okay. And then we already discussed the interlocal for nine-one-one and already touched base with somebody.
Kim Vessels.
Okay. Law department. Okay. What else do we have?
That's all I have.
I've got one more thing. Just came up in an email. And it may be my fault. Make my move, I think we were going to do an interlocal agreement with the city to fund a renewal term for that.
We, we voted to approve that, but we need an interlocal.
Okay. And I kind of guess, I thought they were going to. I, I think, I, I think that it was preferable to the comfort level of Val and, and the votes as opposed to having a new, you know.
A new contract.
A new contract directly with the county as, as a new soliciting entity.
It was, it was, we were going to extend the city's contract.
Yeah, we've already done it for six months, I guess. And so now I make my moves, getting nervous. And I, I don't know why the city hadn't gone ahead and done it, but I thought we had, I understand. I, I can go ahead and do an interlocal for that one-year extension. Do, I, I don't recall what dollars worth it, but I.
I want to say it is.
It'd be in our minutes.
I hate to guess, whatever. Can you check that?
Yes, I will.
Well, assuming.
Get that to you.
Assuming that you're comfortable with, again, and you approve, I think you authorized it, but let's just go ahead and authorize Jeff to. it, but let's just go ahead and authorize Jeff to, to sign an interlocal.
Um, I moved.
To that effect.
The president be authorized to sign the interlocal agreement for Make My Move with EDC.
Second.
I was actually with the city of Pittsburgh.
There was city.
We're agreeing to fund the city.
Yes.
Renewals.
Yeah. Because I'm not sure the city wants to.
Well, apparently not, they didn't have it in their budget.
Well, they, they, they're fine doing it if we pay for it.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
I, I can make you some offers if you'd like to hear it in a thing.
Now, Ron. The issue is, are we gonna be able to generate more people?
Well, and I think they, they seem to think they are, because they have some.
Exactly.
People in the hopper, so to speak, or.
Not a lot, but in Williamsburg.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
I'll, I can go ahead and get the template on that done.
Okay.
Fill in the, the amount of the.
Okay.
Renewal fee.
And, uh, you know, AJ should be involved at some point, is the.
Well, I, I, I think the mayor sent him an email, wanted to know where it stood. He just said he didn't know anything about it, but I thought he was on the same email I was on, but I don't know. That's neither there.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, the fund that that will come from.
Mark's concerned about that.
Again, it's in, in the minutes.
Did we use county edit?
Was it gonna come from county edit?
I'm thinking it.
I thought we did.
But I'm not positive. My slug says that.
I'm pretty sure it was.
It won't take me about five, ten minutes to look it up.
Okay, sorry about that, it may have been uneven, I thought it was, I thought I would be getting something to look at.
I did a global search for it, but.
Did you, were you able to, to, uh, address the issue of the health board's personnel committee meeting on Friday morning at ten?
It's out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Yeah, I, I sent you guys, okay, yeah. I sent you guys.
Same thing you sent to me.
Just my thoughts on what we can use to, uh, to commit the uncommitted funds of ARPA. Since that time, somewhere in the stack, a copy of where that was.
Not in minutes. The Make My Move.
There it is, right there. You've got yours. It's not in minutes of where the money is coming from?
I'm, I'm pretty sure it is.
I'll, I'll double check.
She's looking at the minutes, I think, don't you?
It was just June twelfth.
No.
No.
This was not in our last meeting.
Couple months ago.
It was very.
Yeah, it's been a while, it's been, uh, anyway, you're confident.
Apparently confident was county guy.
I think when Val was here, it was discussed, I know that, but I don't know that he took definitive action because.
The hospital.
City might not have been in, and their ducks are over that one.
Well, it's kind of vague. Theresa Lindsay with the EDC gave the monthly updating, Edith Grant application for the, I reached, I don't know.
This was with Val.
Yeah. Counsel also.
I'm sorry.
So, we took it to counsel also.
Yeah, right.
Oh, there's thirty Make My Move convention, okay, I was just looking, okay.
It's not from June twelfth.
I'm sorry.
So, Bob, you find that, get it to Ron.
I'll get it to you.
You'll get it to be decided, we'll get it over to the city.
But the contract itself will still be between the city and Make My Move.
Right, right. Okay. So, Marion, did you see the, the list I sent out yesterday about, um, potential, um, additional commitments of, of ARPA so that we can get the remaining four fifty committed? Now, some of the difference, uh, of, of this, these, this list versus previous lists that we've committed are that a lot of these have no other source of funding. And so, uh, where we were setting aside money, a million dollars, a little over a million dollars, that would be general fund money, that would continue to be available for projects that we agreed with counsel that we all had to agree before we could spend that.
Yeah.
Some of these do not have other current sources committed to them. So, very first one is the roof shortfall. So, we have money committed for the horse barn and Coolman Roof, but to do everything we're projecting, we need an additional two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. The landscaping shortfall, I think we called it hardscape landscape, that, uh, LWC talked to us about a couple of weeks ago, there's about a hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And that is, because we had five hundred thousand committed, the, um, the estimate is seven hundred thousand. And that's a hard one, if we assume that we can have the highway department do some of that work with some, uh, some of the, uh, money that is currently committed from, from general fund to buy equipment, we can move that around, pay for some of the staffing out of that money, and then pay for the equipment out of highway, MVH funds, uh, or local route and street funds. So, that would save us a hundred thousand dollars off of that contract, which means that we're a hundred thousand dollars short. The nine-one-one communication shortfall, I put in two hundred fifty thousand and then I, I sent a, a text to Barrett Ritter, who is doing that work, and he said it would be safer to put a million dollars shortfall. Now, that, I gotta tell you, that is something that I, I never contemplated, that it would be a million dollars. So, we probably need to have further discussion with him and with counsel before we do anything with that. The, Brad, you brought me this idea on the firearms for the sheriff, which he's, he's talked to you about needing a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to replace, uh, all of the weaponry.
That was, but that, that also included, one seventy-four was all the firearms for the entire Department of Enforcement jail, which he's gonna do, he's gotta do anyhow, but I mean, that's. And, um, also the two drones.
Okay, that included the drones?
Yes.
So, what would, what do you think would be an appropriate number to put there? Cause I, didn't we already buy him some drones?
Well, no, the problem was with the drones, we, they were with DGI, which is the leading technology for drones, but the federal government is, is in the process of banning government entities.
Cause it's Chinese.
Cause it's a Chinese-owned company.
Okay.
So, the next company, technology-wise, is sixty thousand dollars more.
Okay, so, that, that additional money, sixty thousand, is in this one seventy-four?
Yes.
Okay, but we did commit some funding.
Yes.
Out of, uh, out of the opioid money.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so, so that combination of sixty thousand new dollars plus what's in opioid would allow him to buy the drones.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you, so one seventy-four was his total request?
One thirty will get all enforcement, replacement firearms and the two new, two drones. And that's his preference. And then he would slowly replace the jails based on our conversation we had last night.
So, one thirty?
Yeah.
And do you think that we should do that all out of this, or that we should say, we'll do part of it, do part of it out of commissary, or what do you, what do you want?
Well, I mean, I guess traditionally, that's always been, no, with general funds, I mean, I mean, firearms.
In the sheriff's budget, I mean.
Yeah, in the sheriff's budget, but it still comes out of the general funds.
Yeah, I mean, this is, ARPA is not something he's ever counted on in the past.
And I, we know that, it's just, this was.
We need to commit that.
That's why we were coming up with num, numbers where we have to pay out of general fund or ARPA to, to preserve that, preserve that money that.
Okay, and I threw in the five thousand dollars on signs for the playgrounds.
And what is, what is that?
So, so.
When did county ever have a playground?
We don't have playground, but we helped to fund five playgrounds.
Oh, for the, for the help?
For help.
Okay.
Which is ARPA funds. So, we contributed fifty thousand. Well, it turns out that there needs to be a sign put up, uh, and it has to meet certain requirements from IHCAA, who matches the fifty thousand with another fifty thousand to put up this sign that acknowledges money came from IHCAA and, and patronicity, but then it also acknowledges all of the major donors, so the county would be on that as well, as, you know, the, the, uh, EDC and, and all the groups that, that gave at a significant level.
And how does that benefit?
It's a, it's a requirement for match, which was in ARPA, um, expenditure. So, I just put it in there for your consideration.
I mean, how many projects are we gonna be doing this for?
Just this five. But, and, that, that we were able to match additional state dollars by, by contributing to it. So, they're, they're, um, nine hundred and seventy dollars apiece, so I rounded up to five thousand. If, if you will.
There's a lot of projects out there that, that would have signage.
These have to have signage.
Oh, why weren't they included in the original budgets?
It was an oversight.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
So, this is, this is funds that we are trying to allocate for ARPA that could take the council, and they're gonna preserve this number, like all the other ARPA stuff that we've done.
This, this would be spent out of ARPA, but.
With an agreement with council.
None of the, right, but none of these are projects that already have committed funds. So, these are all things that, that, um, we would be doing that would not redirect money into a project account in the general fund.
And East Germantown can't pay the sheriff this?
They may be.
You get my point, I mean, it should have been covered. I mean, this is out of Wayne County's eye.
I do get your point.
And just so, I mean, are there any other oversights that Wayne, Mother Wayne County is going to be expected to pay for?
Not that I'm aware of, but by definition, oversight.
Oversight is that you don't know.
So, there won't have to be signage.
You can't predict an oversight, can you?
We won't have to pay for signage on thirty-five of Richmond's car seats or something like that.
Wow, that was almost.
Yes. Well, you, you know how I'm receiving this list.
I understand.
It does not resemble in any way the manner in which I believe the ARPA funds were intended to have a major impact on the quality of life in Wayne County to help us recover from the tragedy of COVID-nineteen.
Well, understood.
We have five months to spend that for something for like that, and we haven't come up with anything, so we've got to either allocate it or move it.
So, at any rate, we don't have to make a decision today.
We haven't even discussed it, I mean.
I am, I'm bringing it out for discussion. If you have other things that you wanna add to this list, we can, we can add those, and we don't have to make a decision today. We have to begin that process of making a decision on how we're gonna allocate those dollars. So, we're gonna go back to counsel, and we're gonna say, we need another two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for these roof projects, or we can cut out the, the, uh, the ceiling part of it. It doesn't get that building to where it needs to be, but we can do that. The landscaping, you know, if we wanna continue with that project, we're gonna need additional resources, uh, and, and this is one possible place they can come from. The nine-one-one communication shortfall, you know, we're gonna have to have more conversation with, with, uh, Ritter Strategic Services and Matthew on where we go from there. Firearms, you know, that's a.
I'm sorry, that's, that's something the sheriff's budget should be able to accommodate.
If, if there's money there. But again, remember that counsel is gonna have a role in this, and counsel may say, okay, we can pay for this out of general fund, but this we can pay out of, out of ARPA, this we can pay out of commissary, or this we can pay for.
The sheriff has enjoyed so, such a large percentage of ARPA funding.
Okay, so here's what I want you to do, is put together a list.
Sure.
Of you think, um, the remaining four hundred and six seventy-five thousand in that ballpark. Six hundred to, six hundred thousand to a million. And I'm saying that because, um, I think we need to be prepared with, uh, projects that we've agreed on, uh, on a priority, prioritized list, that if we end up spending less money on a particular project that's already been approved, we'll need to recommit that still by the end of the year.
And we have five months.
And we have five months to do that, so we got, let's take a couple of weeks, you're gonna be.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to make a motion at this point that we at least take these to counsel for.
For consideration.
For consideration of comments.
Not till we have a broader examination.
Wait, 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 for consideration of funding from some source.
Yes.
No.
We, we have to discuss it, we can't kick it down the.
No, if the sheriff wants to buy all of his firearms all at once, that's the sheriff's job to take that to counsel, not the commissioner's job.
I disagree.
I, I still stand with my motion.
Okay, I will second your motion, and take it to counsel for consideration. Continue to work, it's, it's not, we're not gonna have final approval, uh, but we need.
Why would the commissioners take a huge purchase?
They ask us every time that something like this comes up, what are the commissioners recommending?
Well, let the sheriff take it to the council.
There's a motion in a second, is there further discussion?
It's inappropriate for the commissioners to carry the sheriff's water on a huge purchase like this.
Having, if no, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I wish I had three nays. It's just totally inappropriate, Jeff.
So, is that a nay vote?
It is totally inappropriate.
Is that a nay?
Nay, I said.
Okay, thank you. All right, what else? Work on that list, bring it to me next week, if you got it.
I've before studied this before, we've never had any serious discussion about not just what we have not prioritized. I mean, when we had the county-wide discussion about ARPA funding, health funding, the people of Wayne County said, we are in a great need of animal welfare, addressing our animal welfare needs, and right now.
And we're working on that.
We're working on it. There's a tentative date of July eighteenth, it'll be a week or two, um, for the consultant to be back to present findings to the, uh, in a, in a public.
Well, she delivered it to us in writing, and I don't find her written recommendations affordable. I think, you know, in a perfect world.
Those are not, those are not affordable.
I mean, they're not affordable, I mean.
But the funding that, short of the construction is, is something that she wants to. All right, if there's. All right, if there's nothing else.
Um, yeah, we, I need to know about Brad's discussion with, at least Cambridge City about their urgent need for opioid settlement funding.
Do they have interlocal, they've signed it, as far as I know, have you received it back?
I've not received it back, the only one I've received.
And we already discussed, we can't fund it until they, council signs it?
I'm, I'm, because they're the only one that I'm aware has so much urgency associated with this.
It's in their hands at this point, I told them.
So I won't try to jump through hoops to get our council to.
I don't think.
Get four signatures on it.
They have the interlocal.
They approve it and then council approves it.
Yeah.
County council approves, okay.
And our council won't be until July, so, which next, next week, so. Okay, so we understand that we've done everything we can, it's in their.
They have it in their, they have it in their hands.
I, I just, you know, they know we've heard their urgency and, okay, it's in their court.
I saw your email about another tranche of money from opioid.
I know, I don't know how we're supposed to account for this. Kroger had not been named in the past, but it's such a huge pharmacy.
My gosh, yeah. Plus, you've got your Kings, you've got me all the Kroger affiliates, it's really nationwide.
Piggly Wiggly, I mean, I don't know if we'll get Piggly Wiggly. But I, I would have had and signed the DocuSign because there was an urgency to it.
Check with the Secretary of State to see what the process is to replace you as a DocuSign joint.
There was a process there, but DocuSign is always trying to get me to authorize signing up for a DocuSign fee, which I've never done. You'd have, you've never paid for a DocuSign subscription, have you?
No.
I, I got this through the Attorney General's office, not the Secretary of State, I think. I think the AG can get you a free public user DocuSign subscription or whatever it takes, but sometime in the next few months, we need to designate the new DocuSigner because they just want one commissioner instead of all three to be the DocuSigner on opioid money.
Okay.
So, I mean, I hope, I've never had one of those go to spam or something and I missed it. Gee, I check every one of those spam notes, don't you?
They would, they would have res contacted you if they were expecting you.
It's just Kroger thing was so different, because I'm sure it was litigated by itself. Kroger is the number one grocer.
Litigation or not.
And Kroger is the number one grocer, so it's got to be among the top five pharmacies. It's the number one florist, number one grocer, so it's got to be a huge pharmaceutical distributor.
Okay, do we have anything else, because I've got it.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that I've been requested by, by NATO, the National Association.
NATO or NACO?
NATO, I'm sorry.
I'm impressed, going to Belgium.
NATO, no, not NATO.
Travel to the crane or what?
I was thinking NATO, which is the, which is the regional commissions, national organization. No, it's NACO to, to serve as Indiana's representative on the National Committee on, on opioid, the use of opioid funding in the.
Oh, great.
I need to let them know in the next few days whether I'll do that. I'm not sure I can commit that much of my time, but that would really warrant to. And then there, there's, there's some kind of leading assembly of that group in California or someplace later this year. I don't know that it makes a lot of sense for Wayne County to send a representative to that, so. Any thoughts on whether we feel strongly we can be represented on the National Committee?
Um, A, if it, if you're sitting, like, up on new developments and how to reduce our opioid deaths. I mean, we rank number two.
Does anybody really know that?
That, that we suffer from opioid deaths?
Does anybody really know and can tell us how to, how to reduce the number of opioid deaths? I mean, because to me, reducing the number of opioid deaths means curing people of those addictions. That's a, that's a.
Oh, if I could be prosecuted for a day, I'm.
You did say that aloud, but. But you can't be, so it's a good point, right? Anyway, we'll continue that conversation, anything else for today's meeting? Bobby?
No.
What did we forget? Ron?
Nothing I'm aware of.
You good now, you good?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
I'm like crossing my legs over here.
Is it quick, you good?
Good.
We're adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.